I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's meeting. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Sarah Fleming.
Here.
Vice Chair Davis.
Here.
Treasurer DeBarty.
DeBarty, here.
Secretary Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee McFay Martin.
Here.
Trustee Milliken.
Here.
Trustee.
Here.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
No move. Or?
Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on to tab A, the minutes. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the July 22nd, 2025 monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
No move. Or?
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? None, thank you. Okay. First, citizen participation. First, we hear from the WCCEA. Mr. Wooten, are you here? There you are.
Microphone, look at that. All right. So, good evening, welcome back. Campus is alive, once again, yes. Filled with energy and the excitement of students and faculty and staff. So, as we near the end of September, it's been wonderful to see everyone back on campus. We had a fantastic wildflower walk event just a couple hours ago with 40 to 50 people out there, walking the natural areas on campus, looking at the fall, wildflowers. It was just, it was actually quite a lot of fun. It was a really good time. So, it's fall, which means you are thinking leaves changing colors and bird migration and wildflowers. And we are thinking Canvas. So, with the full rollout of Canvas this fall, both students and faculty have faced some challenges navigating this new system. A consistent issue raised has been the Canvas messaging system. So, when faculty send announcements or messages through Canvas, they're being marked as external in a student's email inbox. And unfortunately, many students assume these messages are junk and never open them. So, despite raising concerns with IT and the Office of Instruction, and yes, we have issued a ticket, the issue remains unresolved right now. And so, as you realize, effective and real-time communication for faculty and students is critical for their success. And we sincerely hope this issue will be addressed, prioritized, and resolved very soon. Canvas isn't the only new system we've had to adapt to. Faculty have been inundated with major changes in multiple platforms this fall, including beyond Canvas, new curriculum and assessment software, Target X, new faculty dashboards, and the promise of new platforms and changes around the corner next semester. So, most notably, a new override process was launched through the new faculty dashboard just days before the semester began. On the student side, many have encountered disruptions due to the migration to Outlook for their campus email. We've said this before, it bears repeating. Students and faculty alike would benefit greatly with a clear face timeline of introducing these new systems. Rolling out multiple platforms at once without sufficient training or time to adjust does lead to frustration and distracts us from what we all know as our top priority, which is, of course, student learning. We are also strongly concerned with the reliability of maintaining academic integrity in our online courses. As we continue to invest in and use online systems like HonorLock, at the same time, students now have access through even WCC platforms like Google Chrome and Canvas to an AI-powered homework helper. While designed as a study aid, many students are using it to inappropriately bypass their academic expectations. And this trend is affecting the integrity of our face-to-face courses, online, and virtual. We remain committed to academic honesty, but the growing use and misuse of AI tools and online cheating strategies is making this commitment more difficult to uphold. So, we are constantly being told that AI is here to stay and it will forever change the face of academia for faculty and students. An inherent in that statement is the expectation that we will have to change what we have done in the past and what has previously worked if we're to maintain WCC's reputation of excellent, rigorous, and reliable education. On a positive note, we are thrilled to welcome 16 new faculty who joined us this fall. For many years, faculty hiring did not seem to be treated as a priority, and several positions remain unfilled. We are deeply grateful to Dr. Blanca and Dr. Tucker for shifting this approach and investing in our instructional future. We are excited about the talent and the passion this new group brings to our campus and look forward to the continued commitment to hiring and supporting our faculty. So, thank you. Best of wishes to all for a successful and an engaging semester. And get out and take a fall nature walk, yes? It's very pretty right now.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes. Thank you. Thanking you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any public comments? I have one sign up for Jeremy Haley. Is Mr. Haley here? Hi, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. AI is here to stay. It's not all good all the time. That's another topic. End of August, I was passing in a friend's car where I was T-bond on my side and just learned today I got a partially slipped disc in my lower lumbar area. So, awesome. But what I want to talk about is what an unrealized gain is in property taxes, how they relate. And an unrealized gain is a, like a stock, you buy it for one, it goes up, it's not realized until you cash it out. Property taxes are pretty much essence the same thing. You buy a house, you live in it for so many years, all of a sudden it goes up, but they charge you property taxes on that value. That is unrealized gain tax. And the reason why I mention this, because there's a real estate developer in Texas, Mitch Vexler. He is suing the county he lives in. A cock kicked from the district court to the appellate court, now it's sitting in the Texas Supreme Court on a 16th Amendment direct cat taxes case that you can only tax people on income and not property and unrealized gains. If you want to go to mockingbirdproperties.com/DCAD, he has a 30-page amicus brief and a 45-page criminal complaint detailing all this. And on that website, details all this. And it goes into, as this happens, as this progresses, all the bonds that cities, municipalities, and governments get are based off of that, which that is called fraud. And this system's been broken. Reason why I know that governments use this property tax as a weapon is, anybody recall Farmer Grant's out on Jackson Road just west of Zeeb? Well, Syle Township assessed him one year as a house was on there, every acre of piece of farmland, because they wanted to develop it. When they took him to court, the judge said, oh, you guys can't do that. But he didn't take it back down to where it was. He left it a little bit higher, essentially leaving the nail in the coffin to send him out of business. So, and this is in court records, it can be proven. This is why the system's been broken for decades, because that happened a couple decades ago. And it has been abused nationwide, everywhere. And that's why the house pricing market is so out of line. That's why it jumped from the average mean from 90 and the mid-90s all the way up to 450 somewhere it is now in just 30 years. That's impossible for that to happen. You know, and there's a lot goes into it. But I'm letting you know that that's in the way, and that's going to affect you. And Ann Arbor did pass the first northern section of the DDA to expand it. And Syle Township just disbanded their DDA, so there's some, going to be some with that, too. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Okay. Written communications, Vanessa, were there any written?
There was one received.
All right, thank you. Okay, special reports. First up, EVPI Tucker with the mission moment. I'm sorry, no, I do the mission moment. And then EVPI Tucker, sorry. First, I'd like to just state our mission before we get into the business, and that's going to kind of help frame all the things that we're talking about. Our college strives to make a positive difference in people's lives through accessible and excellent educational programs and services. Now EVPI Tucker with the new faculty intros.
Well, good morning, good evening, board. One thing that we want to talk about tonight is to lift, in alignment with our mission, one of our success stories. We have our Entrepreneurship Center that, since 2014, has provided support to hundreds of businesses, 200 in the last year. And we have a success story, and her name is Cortina Bigum. She launched her business called The Fund Project here at Ann Arbor to provide support and activities to vulnerable youth in the community. And after she went through our Entrepreneurship Center boot camp, received support through Old National Bank by way of a grant that we obtained to support budding entrepreneurs, she was able to launch her business and thought, what better place but to Red Space here at WCC? So, this is a testament of the good work that the Entrepreneurship Center has done for many years, and we're excited to share this mission moment. Now, on to our new faculty. I'm excited to present to you what was 16, but is now 17 new faculty, because we were able to hire one individual over the last few months, right at the end. And they're all here tonight, I believe. And I'm just going to ask them to stand and give that wave to America so that we can honor them and celebrate them. They come from a diverse background, they bring unique skills, and we're excited to call them new family here at WCC. The first one is Dr. Andre Arzouski, as I had to pronounce it. He is our professional faculty in life science and biology. He comes to us with a PhD in biology from McGill University and brings a number of years in not just teaching, but also research at places like the University of Michigan. So, Andre, we're excited to have you. Next up is Lauren Beam, a professional faculty in the nursing department. She's a WCC grad that left us and went out in industry and gained valuable experiences, got her bachelor's degree in nursing and her master's in nursing education, and is currently pursuing her PhD in nursing. She brings years of experience as both a clinical charge and staff nurse right across the street at the emergency room at Trinity Health, Ann Arbor. We're excited to have Lauren join our team full-time. Lauren might be at a clinical site. Next up is Kyle Samer. He is a professional faculty in our welding and fabrication program. He comes to us as not just a welding engineer, but also an AWS, American Welding Society Certified Weld Inspector. Happy to report that our entire department has all CWIs. Most community colleges have one or two. But Kyle was a welding engineer at Worcester Mid USA. He taught for us a number of years part-time. He's just a little older than what he looks in the photo. But we're excited to bring Kyle on full-time as he continues to serve students. So, Kyle, welcome. Maria Shakir, she comes to us as our new professional faculty in Arabic and French. She comes to us with over two decades of language, instruction, and cultural advocacy, holding a master's degree in both French and applied linguistics from Ohio University. And she came to us from Georgia, where she was a senior lecturer at Valdosta State University and is really passionate about serving our students and helping them learn new languages. So, Maria, welcome to the team. Next up is David Debacker. He is our new professional faculty in English. He has a Master's of Arts in Written Communication from Eastern, where his thesis focused on using technology to teach writing at the community college level. We were able to convince David to come from a neighboring community college that will rename our name, but is on the screen. But he comes with a number of years of experience, both teaching dev ed and supporting students as they skill up, all the way to advanced English. So, we're really excited to have David on board, and welcome to the family, David. Owen Fleming. He comes to us from Wayne State University, where he was a researcher. He's actually wrapping up his PhD there in economics, has published works and actually contributed to Detroit's evaluation of how healthcare can impact the economy. And that is a published work, you can definitely Google it and find it. He's been a part-timer here for a few years and comes up to us with both research and practical experience, and he loves economics. So, Owen, we're excited to have you. Bridget Gruber. She is our professional faculty in environmental science. You might remember that we added this position out of the growth of our environmental science program. So, this is actually a new position. She holds a Master of Science in Natural Resources and the Environment from U of M. And is just wrapping up a certificate in education for Sustainable Development through Earth Charter International. I know that her and Dave Wooten are great friends, learning about the environment together. She's been a part-timer here for a number of years, and we are excited to bring her to the full-time break. So, Bridget, welcome to the family full-time. A familiar face, Erin Hammond, is now a professional faculty in radiography. Erin has been at the college for a number of years and previously was our clinical coordinator in radiography. She started in the business world in banking and decided that she wanted to change her career and came back to Washtenaw. Success story. And then, after coming here, getting experience in the field, decided that she wanted to grow. Got her Master's of Health Administration at Colorado State University and decided that upon her retirement recently that she wanted to contribute to the college even further. So, very familiar face. We're excited to promote Erin Hammond to professional faculty. Erin, congratulations. Kendo Jonestone. She is our new professional faculty in communications. She holds a Master of Arts in Communication and a graduate certificate in nonprofit management from Eastern Michigan University and is actually wrapping up her PhD in Media and Communication from Bowling Green State University, where she has a research focus on interpersonal communication, self-disclosure theory, and mentor-mentee relationships. She's been a part-timer for a few years and taught at a number of other community colleges. And really excited to have both Kendo's experience as a researcher and a teacher to the full-time breaks in communications. Kendo, welcome to the family. Dr. Peter Carsten is a professional faculty in accounting. He has an accomplished career, started as a faculty member, grew to administration, and still is in love with the classroom and so wanted to come back to the classroom. He spent a number of years, most of his career at Baker College, and has years of public accounting experience. He has both a bachelor's in accounting from Michigan State and an MBA, as well as a PhD in Educational Leadership from Oakland University. He is not only a licensed CPA, but he's also a certified secondary educator in Michigan. So, Dr. Peter, welcome to the team. Jessica King is our new lab assistant in welding and fabrication. Jessica also started at WCC and left and got experience out in industry. She is both a skilled welding and metallurgical engineering professional who has a number of years of experience. She served in a part-time role here, as well as a part-time instructor. And we're excited that she wants to bring that industry experience to the college, specifically around metallurgy and welding engineering. Jessica, welcome to the family full-time. Another familiar face, Ben Moorhead, was hired in 2015 as a part-time lab and clinical instructor. And then in 2018 was the professional that launched our STEM center for advanced nursing in TI. He has served in that role since its launch and has also taught part-time here at the college. He's a registered nurse with a Bachelor's of Science in Nursing from Lourdes and a Master of Science in Nursing from Capella. He is also a certified healthcare simulation educator. And we are excited to bring Ben on as our new professional faculty in the health sciences department. So, Ben, congratulations on your promotion. A new face at WCC, Danielle Sharp. She is our professional faculty in health science, specifically our CINA program, which you might remember, we've offered for a number of years at Ypsilanti High School. Very successful program in terms of completion, success, and placement. She started her career as a licensed practical nurse, then went on to get her Bachelor's of Science in Nursing. And over the course of three decades, she has had experience both in nursing as a charge nurse and an MDS nurse. So, she brings a unique skill set as she has worked and supported CNAs for mostly all of her career and started as one. So, really excited to have Danielle join the WCC family. Welcome, Danielle. Shannon Sherman, a professional faculty in math. She brings over two decades of experience, both teaching here locally. Most recently was the math department chair at Pioneer High School in Ann Arbor, teaching higher-level math. She has both a bachelor's degree in education and a master's degree in mathematics from Eastern Michigan University and is able to teach a full range of courses. She also comes to us for being a part-timer, teaching math 191 and 192 or higher-level calc. And she has done both online and in-person, and we're really excited to have someone with her breadth of experience join our full-time break. So, congratulations, Shannon. Brad Schleiger. She is our new clinical coordinator for radiography, replacing Erin Hammond. She has had a number of years, over a decade, of experience. And it's interesting that a lot of our faculty from our healthcare area have worked within the southeastern Michigan region, many from directly across the street. She is not only an experienced radiographer, but she also has experience with J-CERT accreditation, which is our radiography accreditation standards, and has many years of experience aligning both clinical experience with dynamic curriculum to create a cohesive and enriching learning experience. So, really excited to be Brad on and want to congratulate her on her promotion. I don't know if you're, but Dr. George Pelos Chavez, he's our professional faculty in physics. This is his first time living on this side of the country. He comes to us from Arizona and Texas. He has both his master's and doctoral degrees in physics and taught undergraduate physics at Pima Community College in Tucson, Arizona since 2019. And his experience spans both algebra and calculus-based physics courses, teaching both in lecture and laboratory settings. But really excited that he has been awarded a national award as a junior faculty member, supporting physics teachers in the classroom and innovation across our country. So, really excited to welcome Dr. George to WCC. And last, but definitely not least, there's no relation here, but Dr. Tamara Tucker is the professional faculty in biology. She comes to us having earned her PhD in both cellular and molecular biology. And this was like a twofer, because we were looking for one or the other, and we got both. For the University of Michigan in 2009, she has taught full-time as a lecturer at Eastern Michigan University, has worked at WCC, has been key to our STEM Scholars Program, that you might remember. And she has spent a number of years in industry. So, she's bringing both an industry and research perspective as well as a full-time teaching faculty. I'm really excited for Tamara to join. It's important to note that, as you'll see in your requisition, Board Recs tonight, the positions, it does not show 17, because out of a matter of practice, when we promote individuals, those don't show it, those are for new. So, I believe there's six or seven new. But there were 17, and we have one position that we are still interviewing for a January start. So, definitely excited to have the talent join the college.
Can you say again, how many were moved from part-time to full-time? And how many are brand-new?
So, there were 11 that were promoted and six that were new.
And then one more coming.
And one more coming, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
I want to take a class with all of those teachers.
Yes, yes. They're rock stars. And I told them, they can go home or go back to class and enjoy their education. So, definitely excited to have them. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
All right. You're up, President Blanca.
Yes. As the board has indicated, there is a great interest on behalf of the board, as well as the college, in AI, in integrating AI into our curriculum. We have developed a, this is the first of a series of videos. We haven't developed them all yet. But this is a video, very short, that was shared with the faculty during our faculty in-service. And I'd like to share it with you right now. I know that Trustee Hatcher was, did attend that in-service, so I believe you did see the video. The video was developed by one of our alums, and he owns the company called Nice Shirt. And I hope you enjoy it.
The way we learn is changing, fast. Technology is rewriting the rules and redefining the skills we need to thrive. In this series, we explore the forces transforming education and how we can lead the change. This is Learning Transformed. Imagine a technology so fast, it reached 100 million users in just two months, making it the fastest-adopted app in human history. This is artificial intelligence, and it's no longer just writing code and essays. It's integrated in our hospitals, our cars, and the companies that employ us.
What AI can do is leverage all that data that's out there and help create new opportunities for people faced with rare disease or complex disease, or even taking somewhat of a common disease, like lung cancer that's gone to the brain, and understand that person's unique situation at an individual level.
This revolution is streaming into our classrooms with profound implications. A nationwide study found that nearly 90% of college students regularly use AI tools, while only about 20% of educators having ever explored them. At Washtenaw Community College, more than half of faculty currently use AI in their work, well above the national average. But that still means nearly half of faculty have yet to bring these tools into their teaching. In a moment when changes that once took decades now unfold in months, closing that gap is critical.
We are a knowledge-based industry. We are creating knowledge, we are using knowledge. And I think what we're seeing right now is a transformation in how knowledge is both used and generated with AI. We are absolutely right in the midst of this transformation. There is a question about how rapidly it can be adopted by human beings. We hear every day about AI evolving enormously rapidly, and it's becoming more powerful every month. Humans aren't used to adapting that quickly. And so, bringing a human system, the University of Michigan, along with the technology is a challenge.
Hesitation from some educators is rooted in legitimate concerns. The fear that AI is outsourcing the very process of learning, the struggle, the confusion, the breakthrough, the things that build a mind.
There is an awareness, there is an appreciation for what is happening. We want to be careful and thoughtful about where we go. And so, I don't want to say urgent in a sense of panic. We are taking advantage of the opportunities that AI is bringing to us and want to be leaders in that field.
I think there's a reimagining of how we do the teaching inside of the universities, as well as frankly, how we do the assessments inside the universities. as well as frankly, how we do the assessments inside the universities that's called for.
There are institutions that lead differently. Houston Community College began integrating AI in 2019, and today offers one of the nation's first associate degrees in artificial intelligence.
It actually kicked off in 2020, so we started it in the heart of the pandemic, actually. And while it was, you know, a pause for everybody, it wasn't a pause for this program. I mean, the team was moving full steam ahead.
The question isn't whether AI will transform higher education. It has. Students and employers have answered that. The question now is, how will educators lead that transformation? This is a defining moment where changes that once took decades unfold in months. The cost of being left behind is now far greater than the cost of getting started.
We had just influx of large-scale technology firms that were feeding us. And the staff and faculty, they responded.
DT has a long history partners with the local community college, even from high school and the universities. I think it's important to have this partnership. And the universities can use DT's business process and the practice and real-time on the applications to help developing their curriculum. They not only learn the AI, the technical skills in the classroom, but also using the real business cases. So they have both the business domain knowledge and the AI training.
The path forward is engagement. We integrate AI into our learning so students gain the skills and ethics to use it productively. We partner with industry, so what's taught keeps pace with the real world. Embracing AI as a tool we can shape to advance creativity, critical thinking, and lifelong learning.
So by teaching them how to use AI with integrity, we are empowering individuals. It's like a car, let's use an automobile. That car was only meant to get you from one point to another safely. But it can do a lot of crazy things depending on that driver. AI is the same thing. It's a very powerful tool, but the way it's used will depend on the person that's using it. And that person has to understand the parameters of using it effectively. It's up to leadership to make sure that we empower the faculty, being available for them along the way, so that they have a reliable source, that they can enter this without fear, we're going to do this together.
This is the time for colleges to reimagine how we teach and learn. The stakes are high, but so is the potential reward. A more engaging, personalized, and relevant education for all. AI is here. What comes next is up to us.
Well, I'll be interested to hear your thoughts at some point. But what I wanted to make the board aware of is, first of all, we have been working on AI as an organization for some time, as you know. It's a very challenging time for all of us. And we can't do it without certain parameters, without, you know, administrative policies that set the tone so that we're sure that people work within a framework. And all of that is happening. But everything you heard from David Wooton is true. I don't know how a faculty member today, I am a faculty member. I don't work here as a faculty member, but I'm a teacher. And I think about how much is requested and required of a faculty member to learn, how much they have to learn. And while delivering content that has to be exceptional and up-to-date. So I just wanted the board to know, and we'll keep talking about it. One of our retreats is going to be on AI, is that we, our goal is to provide the support that our faculty need to enter and to continue. Many, as you saw, are really already using AI in their classrooms. We've done surveys to see where AI is and what they're doing that I'd love to share with you at some point. And they are, and we have some real pioneers. But we're going to be there for them, and not only for them, for each other. Because this is a time of total learning across the whole organization. You know, we talk about things like honor lock. Those are all good questions, every question, no one is wrong. I mean, and people come up and say, I don't know, is it the right thing to do? Should we be doing it? I don't know. This is what is available to us now with the use of AI. This is where it's at. But we're going to keep looking, we're going to keep analyzing it and seeing what's the best way to get to where we need to go. So I guess I wanted to make sure that all of us know that we're in this together. And we are open to learning together and moving forward together. It's a very interesting time right now. No one is wrong. If they're using it ethically, they're not wrong. It's just we're trying to figure out how, what's the best way to use it. And we do need to integrate it into our curriculum. As a matter of fact, the last thing I saw not too long ago, actually yesterday, 75% of employers say they would hire a less experienced candidate with generative AI experience. Because it does add value to the individual employee. It does to their work, but that's for another time. But I do want, I just wanted to share what we spoke about with the board, I mean, with the faculty and the entire college on the use of AI. We'll be looking at it from a holistic, we are looking at it from a holistic perspective of the college. And then the academic of which faculty definitely will take a lead on within parameters of policies so that we're, you know, all working along what we call, I guess, quality education as well as integrity, right? And then administratively, we're going to start looking at AI and how it could help us. But that's going to take time, and we're all in it together. If any of the trustees would like to engage in any AI training, whatever we have, you're always welcome. And I, for those of you that can come tomorrow, I look forward to seeing you tomorrow at our AI. Is it AI, I'm sorry, AI at Work, the Innovation Imperative. So thank you. Any questions?
Well, I mean, we're going to be talking about this for a long time, I guess. But what always occurs to me when we talk about AI is the difference between content-based curriculum and process and critical thinking-based curriculum. Because the content is gone. I mean, it's, it's AI. Push a button and there's your content. You don't have to learn that anymore. I mean, what do students need to learn? And it's less content and more critical thinking, which is very hard to get a hold of. We've been trying to figure out what critical thinking is for the last 50 years, and we better hurry up and figure that out.
Very good point.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, everybody. All right. Presentation of the Local Strategic Value Best Practices for 2025, Executive Director Morrison. It is... We don't have it on a tab, do we? M.
Tab M.
Okay, M.
Good evening. We're really pleased to be here together tonight to present to the board our annual Local Strategic Value, which enables us to show how we meet certain best practices in serving our local partners and the community. Completion of the Local Strategic Value, or the LSV, has been a requirement of the state's community college appropriations process since 2011. So we've been doing this for a while. The Local Strategic Value is just one component of the state performance funding formula that determines the percent increase in each community college's budget. And it requires that colleges demonstrate that they meet certain best practices in each of three categories related specifically to how they make an impact in the local community. The state requires that this be approved by a board resolution, and the trustees will vote on this later this evening under Tab M. And this is, needs to be submitted to the state by October 15. The funding formula that this supports, you can see on, see up on the screen. And just as a quick breakdown, 30% of that formula is weighted contact hours. So contact hours that are in the fields of health, technology, industrial programs, and these are weighted higher. 10% is allocated to a completion performance improvement, which measures the college's own improvement over a six-year span in completion rates of degrees and certificates and transfers. Another 10% is the completion number, so how many completions we have in those areas. And then another 10% for completion performance rate relative to all of the community colleges. 5% is allocated based on administrative costs, and then 5% is allocated based on the local strategic value. And the rest is sustainability, which is the base amount that is given to the colleges. So while it may seem like a small part of this formula, there are still a lot of benefits to completing the LSV every year for us. Obviously, it's important for funding, it increases our funding opportunities. It's also part of mandatory reporting to the state based on transparency reporting. But most important to us really is that doing this exercise provides evidence of our value to our constituents. And it helps us keep in front of us how we are serving the people in our direct community and having an impact. As I said, we, as part of the LSV, we're required to address three categories of best practices. And those are economic development and business industry partnerships, educational partnerships, and community services. We will be looking at all of those tonight. I will be bringing up Vice President Marusi, Executive Vice President Brandon Tucker, and Provost Linda Blakey. They'll be coming up to provide some highlights from the LSV. You have a copy in your packet, and that copy also is, has pointed out certain things that are either updates or new items this year. And we'll be talking specifically about some updates going forward. So I'll turn it over to Vice President Marusi.
So we're tagged, Brandon and I are tag-teaming it on this part of it as we relate to economic development. And the first piece that we're going to talk about is in terms of partnerships with healthcare. So one of the highlights that I can share with you is that we offered Long-Term Foundation of Care, and that is caring for the aging responsibly through education in partnership with healthcare employers and Michigan Works, addressing a critical talent shortage, as you know, with 95% direct job placement. We also offered birth, postpartum, and end-of-life dual job training through the Workforce and Community Development Department aligned with Medicaid insurance. Now Medicaid pays for these services, so now there's, we need to start to train people to deliver those services. And additionally, WCC has a longstanding partnership with Trinity Hospital, and has for years, to provide phlebotomy job training. In addition to that, we've hosted several, as you can see, health and safety offerings on the campus through the Ann Arbor Township Fire Department. We've worked with the Ann Arbor Police Department, CSMT Children's Hospital, Integra Health Associates, and the Washington Livingston Medical Control Authority, just to name a few. Brandon?
In terms of apprenticeships, we've continued to expand our apprenticeship partnerships by hosting for a number of years and continuing this year our Youth Apprenticeship Week with WISD, Michigan Works, and Leo and others. We've also continued to host the Transportation Technologies, formerly known as Automotive Services Apprenticeship Fair with employers recruiting from both automotive, manufacturing, and welding. The Closing Skills Grant, that was a three-year grant that really jump-started one of our strategic goals at growing apprenticeships. That was a regional grant in partnership with seven colleges, served 600 employers, and then 1,400 enrolled students across southeastern Michigan. And then we were awarded a grant through General Motors to support an additional 20 apprentices. And I actually just found out this week that they would like to give us more money to be able to support more apprentices because it works.
Great.
You might remember that we started the FAD program. We're now in Cohort Three. This past year, we celebrated the second cohort. The first cohort graduated just this past year. I'd happen to report that they are working. And this cohort this year is even larger, with Toyota expecting to have their own cohort going forward.
This past year, we partnered with Siemens, and they provided us a grant to implement the corporation's software for CAG-CAM, and it should be CAE software that will be used in training and product development. Additionally, the Entrepreneurship Center, we've had 400 clients served over the past year, offered 18-month incubator with small business hub support through grants, both the LDFA and the SBSH grants. 124 incubator participants went through that program, and 73% of those completed, with 100% of those that started operational companies by March of 2025. So new five-month boot camp for working adults is what we're launching this, this fall or this winter. And it includes business ideas coming from a variety of different places, but from students just trying to figure out where is it that they want to land in terms of starting a business? What do they want to focus on? And finally, this fall, the Workforce Development and Community Development Department, we ended up creating programming to support artificial intelligence. We have fast-track job training options leading to business industry certifications, training and skill development, and new classes introducing generative AI, and also AI for business owners to be able to help them with planning.
We've continued the creation of semiconductor technical training. You might remember that we got a significant grant through the M-Star Initiative. Shovels will be in the ground here soon to create a soldering and brazing lab in the OE building, as well as a simulated clean room. And due to our 2.522 billion earmark from the federal government, we've developed our electric vehicle battery and charging maintenance programs with a number of new programs. And of course, the board is invited to October 13th to celebrate our new EV lab, which has been constructed in our previous motorcycle space. That lab is finished and touches, being put on it, and excited to be able to support this industry. We've continued to showcase our VAS Transportation Center. You might remember we launched that in 2014. President Malacca, as well as a very rock star panel, was at the Detroit Auto Show. We continue to support Ann Arbor Sparks Mobility 360 Tech, which is coming up. Eyes on Design at the Ford House. And then, of course, just last week, we had the Center for Automotive Research Management Briefing Seminar with the display and panel presentations in Detroit. In addition, DTE has reached out to us around a year and a half ago, but have had such good showings here at the college to sponsor EV drive events. Those are open to the community to come on campus and to break down the barriers and the fear of EVs. And we have our, almost our entire EV fleet that is highlighted in the community when they're here to show them that not only do we have cars, but we have a program. And then we have incorporated our EV-on-a-bitch learning stations, which are purchased with our Congressional Earmark Grant to show both community members and potentially interested students on what those careers look like.
Next are our National Trade Union Partnerships. This is the 36th year, the summer was, that marked the 36th year for the United Association. Over 3,500 members participated in a record 30 classes, or 130 classes. 140 members graduated from the five-year A hundred and forty members graduated from the five-year instructor training program this year, and thirty-four of those received a WCC associate degree, which is considerable. We also signed a five-year agreement for the first time with the Electricians, the National Training Institute, and had twelve hundred electricians on campus for this year's instructional training program week. Trades groups bring a total of more than six thousand members to the campus annually in the summer, generating twenty-three million dollars of local economic impact.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee. Chair, Madam Chair, I just wanted to point out, this is a tremendous, this is tremendous value to the community, the twenty-three-million-dollar impact. When you think about a community college, I mean, oh, my gosh. I mean, this is the value that these programs bring. So I would like, I appreciate the work, I know we all do, I say that on your behalf because I'm sure you feel the same way, of, you know, Dr. Marusi and Dr. Tucker, Dr. Dunham, and all the tech staff, the IT staff, and the facilities team that make all of this happen. And while they are here and all year, we really do our best to make sure that we are meeting their needs. And it's because of that twenty-three-million-dollar impact. And hopefully, we can even grow that to be more. So, thank you, I just wanted to share that.
I always have to ask the rude question. Oh, I'm sorry. You know, this is really fantastic for the community. It's very good for us and certainly good for these associations. My question is, do we notice? Do we keep track? Do we encourage minority inclusion in these programs? We see lots of pictures of very energetic white men, and I think they're doing all doing very well. My question is, are there women? I'm sure there are more women. And how many brown people are in these associations that come here that we support?
I can't answer that question because the hiring that happens at the various trade unions are actually the trade unions that end up identifying applicants and they solicit for applications and throughout the locals throughout the country. And then they are the ones that make the decisions regarding who enters those trade unions and what that diverse makeup is. I can say that with regard to our own apprenticeship programs, of course, the ones that we host here, we're very inclusive in terms of trying to reach every person that we possibly can that might benefit from getting a living wage by participating in a union if that is what is right for them, if they're interested in a union type of training program, or if they're interested in the College Credit Degree Program Training Program at Washtenaw.
You could at least know how many of the hundred and forty members who graduated, because you saw them, how many of them were brown. I mean, historically, these associations have restricted membership to white men. And we support that by doing everything we can, as Rose said, to make them comfortable here and make them spend money here. And what I want to know is what the last time I worked for this, which was thirty years ago, I taught for UA, and the president of Eastern of Michigan State spoke and said the workforce in the year two thousand, which was a long way away, is going to be brown. And he was booed off the stage by these people. And I want to know if we are encouraging promoting racism or inclusion in these programs.
If I may, you know, trustee Hatcher, you made that point a couple of years ago, and it's a good point. They do have, they have included, it's it's changing, not drastically, but yes. As a matter of fact, the training director for the UA happens to be a black man. And I, there are some, but they're not going to be in the picture because they haven't graduated. But it's not, Michelle's right, and you know that, we don't choose the classes, but they are looking at diversity. They've even talked about it. It's even part of their goal. They take pictures of the few diverse people that they have, but everything's got to start somewhere. And they are beginning. It's, I understand the way it appears, but they are seeing that.
One way it can start is if we begin to include that information in our reports on the participation of these people on our campus. Not to say good or bad, but a two percent increase in women in the UA, that's a statistic that should go on this page, whatever it is. Not to criticize it, not to say it's good or bad, but to include the information.
It's the optics.
It's the optics. And it has something to do with what they see as well as what we're looking at. We have some small influence. They choose their people, of course. And the way they get into their associations is whether their uncle represents them, and their uncle is probably not brown. But we have an obligation to at least notice and report what they're doing. That's all. Never mind, I say it again next year.
Well, your point's well taken, and we will continue to take a look at that.
I just want to follow up on that. Is there anything obstacles to us asking the various organizations, the electricians, the plumbers and pipe fitters, et cetera, that participate to give us some sort of breakdown on gender and race of their participants? Is there any obstacle to us asking them if they can provide that to us?
There may be. I'm not sure at this point, but we'll look into it. It would almost be if you were having a wedding at a, I guess we shouldn't, if you rented a facility, it's there, they are here, they're paying us to have it here. You do have a very good point about the diversity, but I guess we, you know, I could ask them. I certainly will. And we have, by the way, and we have.
I mean, I'm, I'm not asking them to force the participants to reveal their gender and their or their gender preference, or I guess some people think it's binary, or their race, but if people would volunteer, be asked if they're willing to share that information, it would, I think it would help address trustee Hatcher's concerns if we could get that information voluntarily from any of these organizations.
You can always try.
Trust, I will do that.
I hear what you're saying, and and I'm right on with with my colleague here, Hatcher, but I'm not sure if we're, I mean, that's a delicate situation to ask because, you know, it's against the law to ask those certain questions. And I just don't want us to get into a bind with these these corporations and organizations and that they may feel that we're getting into their business. That's where I'm at. I don't want them to feel that we're getting into their business and how they handle their reporting, maybe to the government. But yeah, they pay us, but is that something that they would feel comfortable in doing?
Right.
And what are we going to do with that information? See, that's the thing. And so I think we got to either really, really consult with our consultant here or before we step out on this this plank, because I don't want us to get in trouble with them and then they pull back. That, that can happen. So, you know, I hear what's being said. I've always felt that way. But I think at the point where this is their business and this is their show, and they're paying us to help and facilitate the training.
And we're fortunate because we have counsel here to give us boundaries, to tell us what the lane is that we need to stay in. So we can incorporate all these sensitivities, but understand that it's proscribed.
It's usually better to present yourself as a helper than somebody who just wants to demand things. So you can always approach it as, hey, we're educators, we're cool, we can help, you know, that kind of approach instead, so.
Very good advice.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
I remember in my orientation to teaching for UA, they had a film which made very clear that they have no legal responsibility to report those numbers to the government. They are exempt from those considerations. Of course, nowadays, nobody has to do that. I'm not saying that we don't want them here. I'm not saying they don't do a wonderful thing. I'm saying somebody goes to graduation and looks at that hundred and forty people and see if you see any brown people. I mean, I'm not asking for data or intimidation or criticism. We are supporting whatever they are doing. We are liable for that when when judgment comes. Never mind.
Good points all around.
Yeah, good points. Thank you.
And to finish up this slide, I wanted to mention that we support UA in apprenticeship training of over one hundred and sixty locals across the country. Out of Marilyn Donham's office, that happens outside of ITP Week. That happens in the summertime. And in addition to that, we support and deliver training from this campus to four thousand twenty-nine sprinkler fitters year-round, completing classes with support from WCC.
We continue to have broad participation on a number of boards across our community. They're listed here, just some examples, SimCOC, Ann Arbor Spark, Trinity Health, of course, the American Center for Mobility, Michigan Works Square One, as well as Michado. As you might remember, the new Ellsworth Center is open that replaces Harriet Street, where we were co-located for twenty-four years in partnership with Michigan Works. Our Center for Career Success, formerly known as Career Services, launched just under thirteen hundred appointments and workshops, supported about seventeen hundred and fifty individuals through sixty-nine classroom presentations from the students that were able to come back and report. A hundred and ninety-three came back to thank us for getting a job. That's up from a hundred and nineteen that did in the prior year. We are an exclusive partner for the Open Avenue Foundation with a hundred and fifty-four enrollments for internships and extraterrestrial learning. And we have at least three, oftentimes more, career fairs with a record number of seventy-plus employer partners.
And as you've probably seen, we're pretty excited. We have about two hundred and forty people registered to attend tomorrow, the WCC AI at work symposium and the Innovation Imperative in the fall. So with regional leaders, we have, we have a number of regional leaders from DTE, from Henry Ford Hospital, from Ford Motor Company, from the University of Michigan, and also we have a panel discussion that Rose may be moderating that includes Ann Arbor Spark, the Department of Labor, of Economic Opportunity, Google, and of course, WCC at the center of all of this. And the event leads into Ann Arbor Sparks. It's one of the first events this week that starts on Wednesday for a two-tech three-sixty technology-focused event for the region. Yes.
What time is that panel discussion?
Panel discussion starts at, Lori, what was it, two-thirty? Oh, two-forty-five, yeah.
Two-forty-five, and that's here?
That's here. That's here in Towson.
So I could come and?
Yes.
I don't have to register to come to that?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Day starts at eight, if you want to come. Is it eight or?
Nine o'clock, the program actually starts.
I want to see you in action.
Will media be in attendance tomorrow?
I believe there will be some people from the media, yes.
I think the exposure from this will be very good for us, and I hope that it's widespread.
Yes, thank you. And already, Dr. Bilaca has been featured a couple of times with WDIV, and we've had press coverage not only through Ann Arbor Spark throughout the country, but also through local radio and newspapers.
Talk about AI, I hope there's a component, I did look at the the day, but I don't remember. An important component of talking about AI is AI ethics. It's a whole new world of of being ethical with AI, and I hope that's included in the presentations and.
Yes, I think, I think.
Continue to discuss it.
Trustee Hatcher, I think they'll all in some way remark on the ethics regarding AI, for sure.
Hi, now I'll transition to category B, educational partnerships. We continue to partner with our local high schools on our dual enrollment. We had close to fifteen hundred students enrolled for Fall '24, which was thirteen percent of our student body. Continue to offer classes at our local high schools. We had seventeen classes this past year. We picked up in Fall '25, we picked up a new post-secondary partner with Belleville High School. So their early middle college program moved from there at the west side of Washtenaw County or Wayne County, and they've moved to us, and they're very happy with the move. And our workforce and community development area continues to provide data analytics training for Whitmore Lake High School students that are in business classes.
We've continued to offer our full and half-day summer youth camps and classes through community enrichment with camps for coding, healthcare exploration, NASA Space Explorer, three-D animation, and more. And some of the board member was able to participate in our summer learning experience graduation. That was a six-week program at Park Ridge and Ypsilanti where students got not just engaging activities, but teacher-led academic instruction. It had a number of partners such as Toyota, Huron River Watershed, DTE, and EMU, to say the least. We've continued to host our STEAM Week, now in its seventh year, with more than forty-eight in-person and virtual sessions to approximately five hundred high school, college, and community partners. And then in February two thousand and twenty-five, we celebrated our annual CTE month, where we had information stations across the college to talk about the value of CTE and try to get students more interested at that as a potential career path. Our Transportation Technologies Department continues to host our Skills USA High School Regional Competition. Ninety-two students from sixteen local high schools participated here on campus. That is due to our our great labs and facilities. Our welding and fabrication host the Regional High School Welding Competition, which brought approximately a hundred and fifty high schoolers to compete in our welding facilities. And then we also host Skills USA State Welding for our welding department. And then, it's still me? Okay. Completed implementation of best practices and developmental education in conjunction with a MyLeap sixty-by-thirty grant, that provided a lot of support for our tutoring and academic success center. We implemented Canvas across the college and continued options for course modality for all students, whether they want face-to-face, online, or virtual, and all success rates continue to be above the national average of seventy-three percent.
We've expanded our Advanced IPSE to now become Advanced Washtenaw, which is an initiative to promote education and job attainment throughout Washtenaw County for high school students as well as adults. We continued our support of our state-funded programs, our Reconnect, our Michigan Community College Guarantee. As of May two thousand and twenty-five, we had six hundred and fifty-one students who received the Community College Guarantee, and we also enrolled over thirty-four hundred Reconnect participants. We also hosted four Adult Learner Days during twenty-four, twenty-five to publicize the services that we have for our adult student population. And we again earned our Military Friendly School designation and a Silver Award for being above standards in terms of how we provide services to over five hundred veteran students and their families. We also continue, our WCC Foundation continues to provide emergency funding. It helped over a hundred and thirty students this last year with over a hundred thousand dollars in assistance to address food shortages and other kinds of transportation issues. Eighty-four percent of the students who received funding remain in good standings or graduated. We also continue to focus and increase the number of open educational resources, our OERs, in our courses to mitigate textbook costs for our students. So we've already estimated saving students over sixteen million dollars since seventeen-eighteen, and we're using those OERs in sixty-two courses and over eighty-seven-hundred. 62 courses, and over 8,700 students have benefited.
She might remember redesigned what used to be the learning commons and tutoring operation to the Academic Success Center. We expanded the availability of tutors going from eight to 21, just in this fall semester. We offer in-person virtual and after-hours tutoring along with supplemental instruction, and we had over 2,500 tutoring interactions last year. The Colleges Care Team continues to address referrals and student issues. Last year, the team had over 400 referrals, which is an almost 17% increase over the last year and a 50% increase over '22-'23. And we launched a Weekend Welding Program for adult students with work and family responsibilities, where they can pick up a class on the weekend solely or combine a weekend class with a weekday class to get done sooner. We have continued to support our transfer students, hosting a transfer fair that's widely attended by a few hundred students each semester. We currently have 88 transfer agreements with other institutions, including reverse transfer agreements, and 68 agreements allowing up to 75 credits to transfer. And what we're excited most about recently is our Talent Together Program, in which it is a teacher preparation program. It's the Associate's Degree in Elementary Education Transfer that we brought to the board and got your approval on. It's led by a consortium of 56 intermediate school districts. We are the only community college education partner, and we presently have 86 students, with them meeting with us recently to tell us to prepare for at least 300 to 400 in the next year.
We'll now transition to category C, Community Services.
We offer more than 200 classes each semester out of workforce and community development to approximately 50, just under 5,500 class enrollments for students each year, including corporate training and lifelong learning. Oh, sorry. The college has an annual walking program in addition for its employees. We support lifelong education with senior-focused classes and health and wellness programs, offering approximately 138 free classes with 1,363 total enrollments last year. In addition, the college offers free tuition through the Emeritus Scholarship for seniors for county residents age 65 and older, and last year, 4,552, 622 was given out in Emeritus Scholarships for credit and non-credit courses. So just shy of a half a million dollars we gave back to our own community. In addition to that, we offer Free College Week, which actually, last year, we had 170 sections with 109 different virtual classes led by 64 presenters. And you can see here that the event had 4,711 enrollments and 833 unique participants on that day. The college hosts cultural organizations on campus, open to the community, such as musical ensembles, the choir, the band, language schools. We have the Chinese School, Persian-American School, and German School of Ann Arbor. If you've ever been here on a Saturday, you've seen the Deutsch School, students, arts and culture groups, and much more. And WCC's performing arts and other departments offer performances for campus and for the community, and these include live and virtual performances, lectures, jazz ensemble concerts, digital media arts, film festival, and more. WCC's 500-seat Towson Auditorium, other spaces in the Morris Lawrence Building, hosts multicultural events, including local and national speakers, performing groups, conferences, fundraising events, and organizations such as the OSHA Lifelong Learning Institute, with a membership of roughly 1,300. The gallery at WCC exhibits student and faculty work, as well as that of regional artists, and Conference Services supports events for organizations throughout the community. Last year, we hosted 5,408 external events, up from 4,656 the prior year, and welcomed 108,160 external visitors to the campus. That's up from 93,120.
So we have the Health and Fitness Center, where we have approximately 6,600 members taking advantage of that beautiful facility. That's an 18% increase over the prior year. The program, the center offers over 65 different health and fitness courses each week. We continue to host the MRF Challenge, which is a national fitness challenge, which raises scholarships, scholarship funds for our veterans. That's in collaboration between the Wadham Center and the WCC Health and Fitness Center. And we're, WCC is only one of two community colleges in Michigan that's been designated as a treat campus in recognition of our forestry management and availability to campus and community. We also maintain extensive green space. We also continue to expand our esports program that is in our arena, with eight competitive teams this past year with over 54 students. We also supported free play for more than 2,200 individuals as well. We had two of our teams compete in the National Esports Collegiate Conference Tournament, and each of our teams took first place in that tournament. And our WCC Dental Assisting Faculty oversees a clinic that offers low-cost dental cleaning and services for students, faculty, and staff. They served over 106 individuals in winter 2025. We also host large-scale community events. Last year, 685 participants raised over $179,000 for the American Heart Association. We also had supported the American Cancer Society in raising funds, as well as Girls on the Run. We've also been designated again as a voter-friendly campus by the Campus Vote Project and NASPA for our high level of student engagement and voter registration activities on our campus. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Ruth, and then...
First of all, this is always an outstanding, amazing, impressive document. I mean, it just summarizes our life here in wonderful ways. And congratulations to all the people who put it together. And I'm very much impressed with the fact that more and more there are numbers in here, numbers of students, numbers of programs. They used to be just descriptive, and now there are some actual numbers. I have two questions. One is, do you ever get a response to this besides funding? Does anybody ever say, "This is really good," or anything like that? No? Okay. Right. You know, I turned in an assessment report once, and I put a note at the bottom, "Is anybody reading this?" And I never got a response from North Central.
I really earlier about that, the same thing.
Do we ever get to see other schools' reports and compare and see what everybody else is doing or not doing?
Yes, many of them have them on their websites.
Okay. Do we look at them? Do we care?
We've before looked at some. And as you would imagine, it varies tremendously on the, you know, size of the school, location, you know, but they all have certain things in common, obviously.
Well, congratulations. It's a beautiful, and always is a beautiful, document.
I just had a quick question regarding the Weekend Welding Program. That is a permanent, a now-permanent program, is that correct?
It is an offering of an existing program, of courses on the weekend. So it's not a new program. It's that we're offering courses on the weekend in an accelerated format to provide students that may not be able to come through the week to be able to come on the weekend.
Okay, so what is the program?
I would say that as long as there's enrollment and student interest, yes. We did have full enrollment within a few months of starting to publicize it, and so it's going well. So as long as there's enrollment, there's interest.
What's the enrollment?
Weldings are, you have 12 students per shift because of the liability in the classroom.
Thank you. Any other questions? Put note on the Park Ridge Summer Graduation. I was fortunate enough to get a seat in the room along with trustee Hatcher that day. And I can tell you that Michigan football has nothing over the energy level. It was in that room from all those young people that were just bubbling at the recognition, their day in the sun. And the only thing wrong with the facility was it was out of room, and it was overflowing in the hallway and the corridors. But Dr. Tucker and President, everybody was there. It was a good show, and I enjoyed it.
I just want to point out, we may not get people actually saying, "You do great." But when Terry and I go over the financial report every month, we look at what's coming in from the state, and we're continually graded very favorably by the state and getting extra money from the state when that money is available. So I know, just, it may not be a pat on our back explicitly, but it's implicitly with that funding that we get that upgrades us above sometimes what many other community colleges are given as bonus funding that we're able to get and bring to the campus, which helps us to deliver these programs.
I agree. Because...
I agree, because in reading this report, it showed where the monies were coming from and how much they're giving us. And nine times out of 10, what I was reading, that we are either one or one of three have gotten the max, but mostly it was us. So that really tells a lot that they look at this very carefully.
You have a comment?
I do. I have a question for Dr. Tucker also about the weekend programs. How many of WCC's programs have been adapted for weekend delivery?
This is our first one in recent years. We did have a communication class that Claire Sparkling did that was on the weekends as kind of a pilot. This is sparking some interest across both tech and gen ed, that they're looking to see how they can potentially adapt this. So I do believe that if there's enrollment potential and there's an interest, it's not a new program. It's essentially packaging what's existing and allowing it to be offered in a condensed format on the weekends. We can more than likely do it.
And I did notice in the Capitol Outlay Report that the majority of classes that are delivered on campus are delivered during the day, the weekend, or I'm sorry, the evening enrollment is less, substantially less than the daytime enrollment. And I'm wondering if there is any interest in developing, delivering evening classes.
I think it really depends on the discipline, because there are some disciplines that are heavily filled in the evening time. Most of your CTE programs, with the exception of health, but that's even on another cycle by itself, they're offered in the evenings. But I do think in certain disciplines, we do have some opportunity there. But it's always looking at student demand, student interest. And every time a student tries to register for a course, and it's not at the time they want, they have an option of telling us that time. And we actually get that report. It's a spreadsheet that then the deans and I are able to look at to see, are there gaps to be able to offer things at different times?
Do students actually provide that feedback? Because it seems like kind of a chicken-and-egg thing. A student looks at it and says, "Oh, the course isn't available when I want it." And you on the other side of that say, "Well, we're not offering it because nobody's asking for it."
Yeah. I would say students do use it. Sometimes they want things to happen that we can't do, like, "Can you offer this class in Morocco this semester?" Which has been a request. But for the most part, yeah, we look at those, and we're able to see if there's interest and try to respond. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Eve?
One more follow-up for something that just went by so quickly, but I want to make note of it, is our OERs, which I think is one, is really such a strong program and significantly reduces the cost of education for students here at the college. And I know we've been doing it now for seven or eight years. I'm wondering, how many new OERs are we seeing per year? Because I know we invested heavily at the outset. Are we continuing to add more classes that are totally, the learning resources are provided by OERs? Are we adding to that? I know we probably, as technology changes and information changes, we probably have to update existing OERs. So I know there's continuing effort there to make the program work and continue to grow. But I'm just wondering, how much is it continuing to grow?
Yeah, it's funny that you ask that. My partner crime here, we've worked together to ensure that, from an IT perspective, that it's visible to students when they try to register. That's one. Two, we will be awarded a grant officially by an organization that cannot be named yet, that's going to provide us additional funding over the next year to stand up, I believe, 25 additional OERs over the next year, as well as we're hosting the Michigan OER Conference this fall, October 3rd or 10th, to the top of October, where we're bringing in kind of faculty and leaders across the state to come in to talk about the great work that we're all doing. But we are definitely a leader in this, and we're continuing to see interest from both faculty and students.
That conference sounds great. Are there four-year universities that are sending representatives to it?
I have a great team, and there's a guy named Carl Beckley, that's the Dean of Academic Services. Carl, that's a question for him.
Yeah, it's been a statewide, it's run by a statewide organization that, it's community colleges and universities, and the date, November 7th.
And I will say, one of the barriers that that grant is going to allow us to address as well is having printed copies of OERs in the library. Because oftentimes, we can put a 300-page OER in a course shell, but some students, much like me, still want to, I need a paper to write on, right? So printing that much, I think we sometimes don't think that that's a lot for students to print. Now, we do give them, you know, a few hundred copies that they can use throughout the year, but we're going to try to break down that barrier, where there at least be some hand reference copies that can be checked out for students that need them the most.
Go ahead, Ruth.
A little historical note. We used to offer classes that began at 7:00 AM for people who came off shift and wanted a class before they went home. So there are all kinds of Saturday morning, 7:00 AM. There you go.
Totally noted. Somebody actually recommended that to me the past week, starting at 7:30. If students are interested, we'll make it happen.
That was one of them.
All right. All right, are we ready for Tab B, the Personnel Recommendations? The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion for this?
Support.
Any discussions on this? Go ahead, Ruth. Ruth, and then Diane.
Under instructions is the grant, a new grant administrator? Is that someone who reports to you?
Some of the reports are Julia Shattuck, our Director of Grants Development. That is a new position to support the growth that we've had in grants, from a compliance perspective.
I think HR, in being consistent with my request that under instruction, there are people who actually teach instruction and people who support instruction, and this is someone who's supporting instruction, to be in a different category. Do you see what I'm saying? Does HR see what I'm saying? Oh, well. And then, of course, 204 years of teaching experience is gone. I wanted to mention that Mariam Berry, who is retiring from the English Department, began as a student here and was one of those independent peer tutors that are listed above her name for a long time in the Writing Center, and then got her degrees and came back to be one of our best teachers. So if you look at those names under peer tutor, you might acknowledge some that might be coming back to teach. There's some of the... There's some, the coordinator of the student newspaper is gone. Is that going to be replaced or?
Yes, the job is currently posted.
It's posted. Good, thank you. Well, I guess that's all for now.
Any other questions?
Oh, one more thing.
Go ahead.
We should be getting a new org chart in November. Hello? Yes, yes. Okay, whatever.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on the personnel recommendations? Go ahead, Dave. Oh, Diane, nice, I said Diane first, sorry. And then Dave.
No.
Sorry.
No, I just want to give, as usual, acknowledgement to the full-time Indian employment. And there's several here that have 23 years of service. Mariam Berry is one. Another one is John Kerr. He has 32 years. And Memi Norwood, 32 years. That's a lot of years spent here, but it was well worth it because they really did a good job. And I want to say kudos.
Absolutely.
And to the others, too. Keela Sam-
One of them is 22 years, just one year less.
Yeah, right. And also to Keela Samuels. And I know that she really liked working here. She really did a lot. Besides, she had other employment, but she told me that her focus was here at the college.
I want to put that in for Keela.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the personnel recommendations.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, thank you. All right, we're good there. Tab C, the Financial Report. So before we begin, VP Barnes, anything you'd like to highlight for us?
Yeah, I'll just highlight a couple of things. First, just as a reminder, this is the financials for fiscal year '25. So this is the general fund as of the end of June. So we'll start looking at the fiscal year '26 numbers next month. You'll see the first quarter results. So we're closing out last year right now. So I'm just going to hit a couple of highlights. First, just a recap of tuition last year. Credit hours were up 2.9% in the fall. They were up 5.7% in the winter, and they were up 6.2% in the summer. So you see that reflected in the financials with the exception of the summer, you see a negative variance there of $85,000. That negative variance isn't because credit hours weren't higher, it's because of the split between how many of those credit hours fell before July 1 and how many fell after July 1. So even though there's a slight shortfall in FY '25, there's going to be a surplus in FY '26. It's just a shift. A couple of other things I'll highlight. We did, in fact, finish the year about $300,000 off in property taxes as we expected. That's due to some DDA and refunds and so forth that we underestimated. So pretty minor variance. More importantly, in state appropriations, all year, we knew we were going to have a favorable variance there. We didn't indicate it was going to be quite that favorable. So we did have $2.2 million that ended up being booked in the general fund that was related to a one-time payment related to pensions. So the state passed, gave us a one-time payment, effectively lowering the pension cost from 21% approximately to 15% approximately during the year. We knew about that about halfway through the fiscal year. We had thought that it might have to be booked to the restricted fund as opposed to the general fund. We ended up booking it to the general fund. We had thought it may be restricted fund because the legislature did indicate that they wanted that money to be spent on things such as mental health, school safety, educator workforce, and academic interventions. But we, in fact, found out that we can book that in the general fund. So that's a $2.2 million more than we had expected in that category. A couple of other things just to highlight that may be a little bit different than during the year. The other line there, you see that's negative 326. We simply overestimated the amount of contract training that we were going to be doing to companies. So we were a little bit aggressive there. We've right-sized the budget for FY '26. But in total, the revenue was quite favorable. Expenses also quite favorable. The only negative variance was one I highlighted throughout the year was utilities, which is pretty modestly unfavorable. In fact, I think they did a great job of making that less unfavorable than it had been at the beginning of the year. So in total, we had a surplus of $5 million roughly of revenue over expenses. Just real quick, how we finished the capital fund. Again, this is a snapshot as of the end of June. Most of these projects, the security camera system, security system, EV battery lab, UAW boiler lab, most of these things as of today are either finished or very near finished. Some of the numbers you see pending are just bookkeeping that we need to do, invoices we need to receive to book and so forth. But this is kind of a snapshot. And the SRB and Maintenance Garage, there's a presentation later tonight that you'll see with respect to that project. And just finally here, I wanted to highlight in terms of our long-term investments at the end of the year. At the end of fiscal year '24, we had $46 million of long-term investments. At the end of fiscal year '25, we have $56 million of long-term investments. So we did put a little bit of that surplus here and plus a little more. The yield that we're currently getting as of the end of the fiscal year was 3.55%. And finally, what I'll highlight at the bottom, we do have a board requirement of maintaining a working capital reserve of at least 5% of our operating budget, which would be $6.9 million. Our minimum was 18. So we well exceeded that throughout the year. Those are the things I wanted to highlight, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for VP Barnes?
I'd move, I'd like to move that we accept the financial reports for year-end of 2025. General Fund, Capital Fund, combined schedule for investments, all funds as submitted.
Support?
Was there a second?
Yeah, she-
Oh, you got it? Okay, thank you. Got it. I didn't hear you, thank you. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, thank you. All right, move on to Tab D, the Facilities Development Report. VP Whipstock.
All right, good evening. I'm going to update you on some of the more notable projects that we're working on throughout the campus. One being the Maintenance Garage construction. As you know, I reported last month that the shipping and receiving building was complete. We did receive our certificate of occupancy, and we're occupying that building. It's fully complete. Maintenance Garage, the demo is fully done. We are starting construction portions of the Maintenance Garage. As we did the demo, we uncovered a lot of unforeseen conditions that were not in the original engineering estimates of contingency plans. A lot of the areas surrounding the salt storage and the salt brining areas, of course, the salt leaked and destroyed a lot of the metal, a lot of the metal framing, a lot of the metal structures. What we've decided to do was, as you can see in this, we cut a lot of that area out, about four foot up, and we're going to be blocking it. That is our proposed change. That way, we won't have to worry about further erosion and also gives the building a little bit more structural sound to it. And we'll be discussing a little bit more on Tab I here coming up. The parking lot, if you may have seen coming in, Parking Lot 3 is fully completed. That went very well. We did not have any unforeseen conditions in that project. We did a lot of curbing replacements and sidewalks around Parking Lot 3. This Thursday, we will be starting Lot 2. Also, what we've been working on is a lot of cement replacement, a lot around the Student Center Building, the GM Building, the TI Building, and the back area of the ML Building. We replaced quite a bit of cement this year. One of the longstanding projects that's been on our project list for about two years is the OE substation upgrade. That happened two Sundays ago. We were able to, the long lead item that you see here, was a 60-month lead time for us to get the panel in. So that went in without a hitch. Now we have expansion capabilities for the OE and Great Lakes Building. The other project is the LA Auditorium renovation. That's fully underway. The demo's done, and we're starting to put up drywall and walls in the LA Auditorium. Other than that, that's it. Any questions?
Is the LA Auditorium used for lectures?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I did know, yeah.
Were there multiple auditoriums we were going to work on? And this is the first of three, right?
This is the first of three, yes.
Okay. And then are we doing one a year, or how are we doing that going forward?
Well, the next two will be presenting together, and we're going to be doing those back-to-backs. It should be within, yeah, that year's timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Some facilities? Go ahead, Ruth.
I just want to say the parking lot here looks real pretty.
It does.
Hopefully, you're talking about the one we're done, not the one we're starting the demo.
Not the sandlot, but actually, it's very nice.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to remarks, would any trustees like to make some remarks? Any trustees?
A question about, a colleague called me that the Free Press had a big thing about, let me see my notes, colleges, 2025, Michigan Fall 2025 College Guide. And most of the colleges and community colleges submitted stuff about how many students and scholarships. And we just had a line that said, "Information unavailable."
I will look into that. But thank you for telling me. You said the Free Press?
It was Free Press, and it's called the Fall 2025 College Guide.
You have a date?
No, but I have a picture. It might have a date on it.
Any other comments from trustees? While Ruth looks for her picture. Go ahead, Diane.
I didn't do anything. I had a good time.
August was pretty relaxing, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
It was beautiful.
Thanks.
Angela?
I have a few things. Every summer now, I think it's been three years, I volunteer with John E. Lawrence in the Summer Jazz Series. The past two years has been over the course of 10 Fridays. This year, it was mushed down to five Fridays in August, and it was still phenomenal, even though I missed the first two. But the reason why I bring it up, I'm giving a huge shout-out to the WCC staff jazz band. And we all know just how fabulous they are. And they showed up and they showed out. So I want to give major hi-fi to them. And I did have the opportunity to speak to some of the musicians there. You know, they recognized me. Well, I hope they did, so. But with that said, I really enjoyed seeing them there. And I was so happy that John, as you know, used to be, used to work here and such, and also got his training here, and that he thought well enough of the band to participate in the Summer Jazz Series, you know, giving back to the community at the Ford Lake. So that turned out really well. That was awesome. And so, another one is, in an indirect way, giving a shout-out to the Art Department here at Washington County Community College. Because as you know, my mother and I, we sit on the Community Leadership Council Advisory Board for the Dunbar Tower, the new affordable apartment building that is about to actually open in about seven, eight months or so, on Catherine and Fourth Ave in Ann Arbor. So I personally, and along with six or seven other individuals, we are part of the Arts Subcommittee. And with all of that said, we send out RFQs calling for artisans to, you know, submit their work for bid, to do their work on our building. At least eight of them got their training here at WCC. And I was, you know, you know, you know. When you have kids and they just do such fabulous things, and they're out there and people seeing it, and you just feel so proud, you got bragging rights. We got some serious bragging rights. And I felt so wonderful whenever, when I was looking through the resumes and, you know, the artist statements and so on, they were saying, "Yeah, you know, this and that, this and that, WCC, this and that." I was like, "Oh, my gosh, we're doing great things." So shout-out to the Arts Department. Let them know, if they're not here, let them know. I said, "Job well done and keep it up." Okay, so, just a couple more things. Okay, so, the other week, I, I'm sorry, this past weekend, I had an opportunity to meet a young man, under 20, but he is a student here in the Health Sciences Department, with the hopes of being transferred to U of M to continue on in his medical career. And so, I never let anybody know that I'm a trustee up front, you know, because I don't go with titles, you know, unless I need to. So I got in a conversation with him, asked him when he's going to graduate. He says, "Oh, you know, like this fall." I said, "Well, you going to walk?" He goes, "Nah, you know, I don't think so." And then it's funny, just divert real quick. That's funny, because students, some students, and I'm only speaking for the ones that I've come across, they don't want to walk, because they feel that it's not important enough at a college level, community college level, to cross. They would rather wait till they get to a university. So when I looked at him with that thought, I said, "Are you sure?" I said, "You said you graduate in this fall?" He said, "Yeah, you know, this and that, this and that." I said, "Well, darn, you know, then I won't be able to shake your hand when you cross the stage." And he was like, "Huh?" So then that's what I went on ahead to tell him. His dad was standing right there. I said, "Hey, you know, I'm a board trustee at Washington County Community College." He was like, "Oh, my God, you are?" So evening ends, I shook his hand, I said, "I'll see you," da-da-da-da-da. He said, "Yes." So we're going to have another person that we know cross the stage. Okay. So I got, I got one more. Okay, so, the reason why I asked you, VP, Dr. VP Tucker, about the Weekend Welding Program, because I had referred three people to the program, and I think I referred them too late, so they have to wait until the winter. So I'm praying that, you know, all goes well, but I know they looked into it. One actually had finished their enrollment process here at the college. They had in the past, but you know, kind of finished up some loose ends, did reach out to whoever it is that's a part of that, the welding program. So I know that one is already set up. The other one I need to follow up with, and the third one, I'm not sure where they are, but I referred some folks to you guys. So, yeah, I'm done.
Good job.
I did some work.
Yes, you did. Any other comments from the void? All right, go ahead, President Blanca.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce the trustees to another new employee who is with us tonight, Emily Dowd. Emily? Emily is our new Executive Director of Facilities Operations. Emily comes to us with an impressive level of experience, including work as superintendent at General Motors, where she led strategic maintenance, dock operations, and facility service initiatives. She also served as Senior Facilities Management Representative, directing operations across all Milford Proving Grounds, UAW buildings. She also worked as electrician sales and a marketing customer manager for GM Power Solutions. Emily Holt- Emily holds a Bachelor of Science in Facilities Management from Ferris State University, an Associate in Applied Science in Architectural Technology, also from Ferris State University. She is a Designated Management Facility Professional and has earned numerous additional-related designations. She'll be working closely with Vice President Whipstock. And Emily, we are so glad that you are joining us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome. I just would like to comment. Last Friday, we had an outstanding event here on campus, the Washington Supply Chain Exchange. It was really very well-done. It was organized by a faculty member. And we had members from business and industry, and they had over 200 students, advisory committee members, and members from industry in attendance. So it was really a great, it's great. And it was a free event and I just thought it was great. I talked to one student, asked her if she was in the business program, and she said, "No, she just wanted to learn more about supply chain. Isn't that what it's all about?" So it was really great to hear that, so thanks. We just opened a new art exhibit in the gallery in the Morris Lawrence Building called the Bee Sisterhood Oracle Artworks of the Hive Song Collective. I'm not sure what that is, but I'm looking forward to seeing it. Reception will be held on October 4th as part of 2025 Michigan Beekeepers Association Fall Conference. We are the beekeeper school, so.
We have wonderful bee gardens.
We got good bees for good bees. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay, before we move on to new business, I'd like to ask the trustees, so we're in a couple hours, does anybody want a five-minute recess break? I do feel like I can push through these reports if you want me to keep going. Do you want a recess?
No.
No, you're good?
Can we get up and rest?
Yeah, you can go if you feel you need to, but I just, I'm giving you guys an opportunity right now. But if you want me to keep pushing, I will. Keep pushing, okay.
Go to the restroom.
Yeah, if you got to, if you need a break, go ahead and take your break.
Thank you.
Just wanted to give you a chance. All right. All right, so we're going to move on to new business, Tab E, Review of the Fiscal Year '25 Audit. VP Barnes.
Do you have the PowerPoint?
I just put it on my pillow. I'm hungry.
Asmosis?
No.
That's fine, I used to do that, too.
I don't.
There it was. Go back one. Okay, I'm going to present a section of the audit called Management's Discussion and Analysis. So I'll just go through some of the highlights and then I'm going to turn it over to our audit partner, Ms. Tracy Moon, to tell you the results of the audit itself. Also, just as a reminder, I say this every year, but this is not only the general fund numbers. This is the general fund plus the restricted fund plus the pension and OPEB fund plus the auxiliary fund plus the plant fund. So some of the numbers may be familiar, some maybe not as familiar because it's a lot more funds that are involved in this report. Okay, so the net position of the college in FY '25 increased by $50.8 million. So it went from $103 million to $154 million. So in other words, the net worth of the college, if you will, went up to $154 million. A lot of that was driven by changes in the pension liabilities. So if we set that aside, that's what the GAS V68 and 75 refer to as the pension and OPEB liabilities. If we set aside that because it's outside of our control, the college still increased its net position by $26 million, so a great result for the year. Revenues grew while expenses declined. As I mentioned in the general fund, we had a $5 million operating surplus. And our pension and OPEB liabilities dropped by $44 million, reducing our long-term obligations. And finally, this isn't in the audit itself, but I always like to highlight it, our CFI score, which is looked at by the HLC, is 6.9. And that would confirm that we have very strong financial health. And I'll compare that later with some of the other colleges. So operating revenues, you can see here that if you look at the total, operating revenues increased by $1.3 million. Tuition revenue, you'll see on this chart, looks like it actually decreased. And this is a result of aggregating all those funds, including the eliminating entries. But really, we know that the tuition, the tuition increased for everybody that wasn't in district and also credit hours increased. The reason it's going down is because there was an accounting change. An accounting change that some things that used to be booked as expenses are now booked as a reduction in revenue. So things such as certain scholarships are now treated as reductions of revenue as opposed to expense. And when we get to the expense slide, I'll point that out. But there's no net result or no impact overall. It's just moving it between an expense line and a revenue line. Grants and contracts were also up, you can see there. We had the Associate Degree in Nursing to Bachelor of Science in Nursing grant, MBDC Semiconductor EV Battery Grant, and the Michigan STAR Grant, all contributing to that increase in grants for FY '25. Auxiliary services, as we mentioned, Health and Fitness Center continues to grow and along with the revenues there continue to grow. And our other sources of revenue is largely things such as the trade unions coming onto campus, the conference center, the catering, and so forth. So our operating expenses, so our operating expenses, if you look at the bottom line there, it goes from $129.9 to $127. Looks like our operating expenses actually decreased. But that's because of, again, an impact of pension and OPEB or other post-employment benefits. So you see it goes from a negative 15, in other words, a negative expense is effectively revenue, to 22 million. So it's more revenue, if you will. But if you look at the individual line items, there are a couple of lines that did go up. Technology costs did go up. We're paying a little bit more for our managed services contract. We're also now, that now includes our SaaS software. In the past, it did not include our SaaS software. And we also have growth in instructional support, again, stemming largely from that STAR grant. So those expenditures for that grant also pass through this line. So, and I mentioned I would highlight to you that Student Services and Student Aid line, the reduction in revenue that was associated with the scholarships and so forth, that offset is in that line. So you can see that's going from $24 million to $23 million. Again, it's just reduced expense because it's now up in the revenue line. Otherwise, it would have grown as a result of more expenses for Pell Grant, Pell Grant expenses. One thing, one other thing I did want to highlight, that overall, and we do watch this, our college expenses continue to support student success with over 70% of total costs dedicated to instruction, instructional support, student services, and student aid. We try to maintain that above 70%. Non-operating revenue and expenses, just very quickly, Pell Grants were up. We had not only a 15.8% increase in the number of students receiving Pell Grants, but the average increase also was up 13.2% was the average increase. And our local property taxes also increased by 6.6% due to increased taxable values. Operating results, here, you can see here that it's just another way of getting at the $50 million that I mentioned earlier. We had the general fund surplus of $5 million. We had the change in pension and OPEB of $24.8 million. And the change in plant fund was a net number of about $20.8 million. So we have transferred more money to the plant fund. We've also transferred money to planned maintenance, unplanned maintenance, and then this is all net of depreciation as well. So if you add up those numbers, that gets you, again, to your 50.8 million increase in our net position or net worth. Again, just looking at the balance sheet side of it, you can see here, if you look at the very, very bottom on the right, the net position is getting stronger. We have a very strong balance sheet, so we can withstand any impact. So for example, you know, the state right now has not passed its budget yet, but when you have a strong balance sheet, you don't have to panic. That hasn't passed yet. So we have a $45 million increase in our total assets, a $25 million decrease in our liabilities, and almost $20 million change in net deferrals. The net deferrals, I won't go into it, it's very technical, but suffice to say, it's a way of smoothing those pension impacts so they don't have, because you see every year I come up here and I tell you how much the pension went way up or way down. This is a way of smoothing those impacts over time. It's an accounting convention. And cash flows, if you look at the first two lines to the right-hand side, those are the basic operations of the college. So the college generated about $31 million in cash. That cash was used to invest in capital needs. So we invested $9.1 million in capital investments on the campus. We paid down debt and we also allocated money to investments. Because as I've mentioned during our budget presentation, we have about $50 million of projects coming up over the next two to three years. So that money is set aside so that we can fund those projects. So strong cash flow, so we cover our obligations, we're investing in our facilities, and we're building our reserves. The CFI, I mentioned at the very beginning, we're right now at a 6.9, so well into the green area of this chart. So that indicates very strong financial health. I wanted to show you, too, that little dot there is the average of all Michigan community colleges. So all Michigan community colleges, on average, are quite healthy. They're at 6.1. Now, we are above average at 6.9, but we are not, let's say, very abnormal in terms of the strength of our finances and our balance sheet. And just finally, I won't go through this in detail, but we'll take this and we'll give this information to the state, the federal government, and different agencies. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tracy Moon. Again, Tracy Moon is our partner from AHP, and she'll be telling you about her findings.
Did you have a question?
Question. As I look at it, there's some responsibility to the foundation for their tax reporting. Did I read that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry if I jumped the gun.
Good evening. Thank you for having me today. Can you guys hear me okay? Yeah. Before I get started, I do want to thank VP Barnes, Ben, Ben's back here, and so is Lynn Grace. All three of them worked tirelessly to get us all the information for the audit. We really do appreciate that, so thank you all very much, including your staff and anybody else that was involved. I know we had some fraud inquiries with the board, so everybody around the campus is, could be picked, so we thank you very much for that. Our agenda tonight, I'm going to be really quick. VP Barnes and I did not compare notes and he pretty much stole all my thunder. Actually, there were some other presentations earlier today that talked about some of the things I was going to talk about, so I'm going to be quick tonight. But just talk about the Board of Trustees letter and then the financial statements. So services provided, services provided and in process. The financial statements of the college are done. You should have those in your packet tonight. Included in that is the discreetly presented component unit, which is the foundation. We actually do an audit of the foundation separate from the college, and then we incorporate those numbers and those footnotes, the important, the really, really important footnotes into the college's financial statements. That is a requirement of the standards that they be discreetly presented like that. The Uniform Grant Audit, typically, we have always presented that at this meeting tonight. This year, what happens with that? That is an audit over the federal funds that you receive. So you're receiving federal money for student financial aid and different grants. And we're required to look at those expenditures that you're spending that money on to make sure that it's in compliance with the grant agreements. The OMB issues a compliance supplement every year that tells us how we go through that risk process and the requirements of those audits. They have not released their compliance supplement. They typically do that in May, June, July at the very latest. So we are not allowed to issue that single audit report yet. Once we get the compliance supplement, once they finalize that, we'll be able to complete that. I think, I think we've decided that management will just present that to you if it's a clean report. If they want me to come back, if there's findings or anything like that, I can do that. But otherwise, look for that from management sometime in the future. We also assist with the financial statement present, preparation. Lynn does a really, really good job of giving us a really good, complete financial statement. We kind of just modify it and make it look pretty, but we are required to let you know that we do that non-audit service. The tax return preparation for the foundation, as you mentioned, that is also in process. We have to wait for a bunch of K1s to come in for the foundation, so we can't complete that. That will get done before the extended due date. It usually takes quite a while to get all that in. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Okay, results of the audit of the financial statement. So we did issue an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that we can give, very clean audit. As was mentioned, your net position is at $154.3 million, an increase of $50.8 million from last year. Again, the audit includes all funds, so I'm talking all funds, I'm not just talking the general fund. I already mentioned the Uniform Grant Guidance and how that's on hold right now. In your packet, the board packet, there are required communications with the board that we are required to have with you. I'm not going to go through these, but they were all answered in the positive, such things as the scope and the timing of the audit didn't change. That's a good thing when we have a scope and timing and it doesn't change. No difficulties with management, no audit adjustments, no difficulties performing the audit and getting our information. So very clean audit. If there were issues, this would be the meeting that I would be discussing them with you. We do look at internal controls over financial reporting, and if we were to find a material weakness or a significant deficiency, that would be brought to your attention immediately. A management letter, sometimes if we find different things that could maybe be done a little bit different in processes, we would issue a letter to management. We had no, none of these letters to issue this year. So again, very, very clean audit, no issues noted. The financial highlights, these have been discussed at length tonight, just at all different times. It's kind of funny just to hear the other presentations before me. But the net position, again, that's up $50.8 million from 2004. There was a $26 million increase in cash and investments, and then a $25 million, what I would call favorable increase or decrease in your pension and OPEB, all the accounts combined. There's quite a few accounts on the financial statements, but there was a $25 million favorable increase there. And then the change in net position, you can see from 2024 to '25, there was an additional $11 million added to your net position there. That was really the Pell. Again, that was discussed earlier. Pell was up over $4 million in the property tax values. The property tax revenue was up as well. Again, that has to do with the property tax values being up. And then the operating revenues and expenses, VP Barnes just went over this. Please take these charts, they, without the context of that scholarship allowance that he talked about, with the, that it was a much bigger scholarship allowance going into that tuition, bringing that tuition line down, and less going into the expenses. So these graphs are a little, you got to know the context behind them before you just look at the graph and say, "Oh, I see that expenses went down." Because it's really not apples to apples, I guess, because of that change in estimate. to apples, I guess, because of that change in estimate. Other things that were in the operating revenues, again, already discussed, was the increase in the, the MyStar grant, the Michigan grant that was there, and then auxiliary, which includes the Fitness Center bookstore. But we know that there's the, the big increases in the Fitness Center, and then other miscellaneous sources such as the trade organizations. Again, that was discussed earlier today. So it's really nice when everybody's kind of all talking about the same things. We all know that we got it right. That is really all I have tonight. Does anyone have any questions or?
A quick question on that last slide. When, when I look at that, operating revenues of 49.1 million, operating expense of 127.1 million, how can we pay our expenses?
Yes.
I mean, can you explain, that's, it's just a non-financial person saying, well, hey, we're, we've lost 80 million dollars, right?
Right, right.
So how can you, why is, why is that on this form like that?
So under the current, the current accounting guidance, there are certain things that go into operating revenue and certain things that go into operate, most of your expenses are operating expenses. What's not included in operating revenue are property taxes and state appropriations. Those are your two big ones. Coming up, I forget if it's, I think it's two years from now, next year or two years from now, there's going to be a change, and there's the gifts, the gifts right now are not considered operating, but gifts are moving up. All, PEL, PEL grants is the other one that is down below, below this information. That's moving up to operating. So it's going to look better, but it's still not, it's, you're probably still going to have that loss, but it's not going to be as big of a loss. So there's a whole section below operating expenses that has your big dollar tickets, your state appropriations, your property taxes, and your PEL grants are all below this line.
Thank you for the explanation. I'm sitting there.
Panicking?
We're not going to be in business at this rate.
Any other questions here? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Tab F, the Argos software renewal. CIO Tyler, hi.
Hi. Good evening, Board of Trustees, fellow colleagues, and friends of WCC. Here before you this evening to discuss the renewal of a software application called Argos from a company called Evisions. About five years ago, it'll be five years in November, the board approved the contract at 255,000 for the implementation of a product called Argos. It was a great decision because we are actively using it to this day and putting it to great use. We would like to renew this software package for another three years, starting in December of this year, 2025, ending in November of 2028. Right now, we're in the process of migrating additional reports to Argos from our legacy reporting system, Orweb. Some of these reports, you actually use the student profiles report, for example, and there are a great number of others. So it is a recommendation to the board that we would like to make to renew this software for another three years for 156,000 and $739. This is a breakdown year by year of how much it would cost the college each year of the renewal. Just for your own benefit, at the bottom, put an asterisk there, we have $51,000 a year on average that we've paid in previous years. With the renewal, it's about $52,246,000 a year, which is actually not that bad considering we build in a 3% increase in maintenance typically for software renewals.
Questions on this?
Any questions?
Go ahead, Eileen.
The initial contract was a five-year contract, and this is down to a three-year contract. Can you please talk about that?
Sure. Typically, we're, since it's IT, technology changes. I don't know if everyone's familiar with Moore's Law, but every six-month, technology increases typically doubles. So we want to make sure we're leveraging the benefit of an extended contract, which brings us reduced costs. But at the same time, we're not putting ourselves in a bind by sticking to something that may be leapfrogged by another technology in that same timeframe.
Thank you.
No problem.
And a question, was there another question first? Okay, just a question either for you or maybe even Linda. Is this the software we use to generate those pretty reports that we use to hand out? Okay. So just so that the board understands what this is, those beautiful reports we take to Congress when we visit them in Washington, that's the software helps us put that together?
Yes.
Yeah, and those are very, very valuable. Yeah. Just wanted to make sure I had the right one, but yeah. All right, if there's no other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, Tab G. This is about the Target X, and we have Linda, Provost Blakey.
Car point, please. Hi. Tonight, I'd like to talk about our Salesforce renewal of our Salesforce contract. And it's, again, our continuing expansion of student success priorities. So in 2020, we launched Target X. It was deployed as our customer relations management system. We do all of our application processing for our new and re-admit students, our UA students, or WTMC students. We've now released this year all the applications for our second-tier health programs. We also use Target X, which again, sits on top of Salesforce, for all of our student communications, for recruitment, retention. This includes emails, phone calls, text messages. We also have been using a website chatbot, and Target X and Salesforce also allows us to, to create and support virtual lobbies. These lobbies were key during, when we were closed down for COVID, but through the Welcome Center, admissions, financial aid and advising, even as we came back to campus, we continue to provide those virtual lobbies for students who are unable to come to campus, or it's easier for them to get their services through our virtual lobbies. Because we're using Target X, it requires all Target X users to have Salesforce licenses. Some of the very exciting updates that we're rolling out this fall are resulting in the need for us to increase our Salesforce licenses. First, our early alerts. These are used by faculty to report early course absences. They can report if a student is needing support for books, childcare, transportation, or they can also use it to send encouragement or job well done throughout the semester. We're also rolling out a new scheduling tool. They'll be used for students to schedule appointments with advisors, counselors, our coaches, coaches, and our student resource case managers. So our early alerts, we did a successful pilot this past summer. We were using it for our co-requisite extra support classes, which are the classes that we used, that we transitioned our developmental classes into these classes. It was very successful pilot. We got a lot of feedback from our faculty for those early alerts. We expanded it to all of our classes in Fall of '25. The faculty receive training during in-service. It encourages submissions as early as the first day of the semester. We know if we get an early alert early, not midway through the semester, but early, we can do more to support the student in staying in class. It also provides the faculty options to provide a personalized message. These early alerts provide communication to our success coaches and other support services. The faculty receive messages with the supports that were provided, closing the feedback loop. The system also provides for positive nudges. During the first week of the semester, we had over 70 alerts submitted, and as of the end of last week, we had over 225 alerts already submitted to date. Just gives you a little overview of what the alert looks like. Faculty login, they can see their class list. They can click on if, you know, the student of, which student they would like to send an alert or kudo to. The system also allows the faculty to pick several students. So maybe I'm sending the same alert to three students. So I can click three students. I'm going to indicate the alert that I want to send. You can see here, it indicates, do I want to send a kudo or perhaps an alert? And the type of kudo or alert the faculty selects. So there could be things about the academic engagement, lack of attendance, or it could talk about making them aware that they need to have maybe some tutoring support. So the early alert categories include if the student's perhaps having difficulty with concepts or course requirements, and how they can get support for that. Academic engagement, which would be attendance or participation. It also creates awareness for our students of other college resources that we have as the Student Resource Center, our Academic Success Center that Brandon talked about earlier, our Writing Center, our Learning Support Services if they need accommodations, and they can also be used for sending generic messages with faculty comments only. The system also is set up so that there's automated emails reminding faculty there's a key part to the semester where it might be good to send an alert, as in the first day of class, the eighth day of class, at the midpoint, at the end of the semester, and towards, you know, again, at the end. And again, it also lets the faculty get information back on exactly what happened with the alert that they sent. So again, the new early alerts through Target X require that all faculty have a basic Salesforce license. The license is being provided to all faculty, that would be full and part-time faculty for the fall semester. As we progress into the winter and spring/summer semesters, additional faculty licenses will also be required for faculty that are not teaching in this fall semester. The new Salesforce to, Salesforce scheduling tool is going to be replacing SARS, which is our Student Appointment Reservation System, which is the scheduling tool we've used since 2014. This system is limited in that it, when that, when students are trying to sign up for their assigned advisor, if their assigned advisor is not available, it doesn't provide a listing of the other advisors in the area. So if I'm a math and science student, I want to see a math and science advisor. The new scheduling tool in Salesforce will show, oh, your advisor's not available. Let me show you the other math and science advisor that is available for you to make an appointment. The student interface on the new tool is also much improved over the current tool that we have. The scheduling tool is something that we already have available in our Salesforce contract. However, the individuals who need to use the tool, which would be our advisors, counselors, our Student Resource Center case managers, and the staff who actually set up appointments if students need assistance, or Welcome Center staff or other front counter, will need a special license to access that software. So our Salesforce licensing, again, we began using Salesforce in 2020 along with Target X. It's primarily been used by our Student Services staff who have had the licenses. Our license cost has been well under $100,000 annually, which is below the threshold for board's approval. With our move to Target X early alerts, all faculty will now have licenses to better support our student success. We'll also be replacing our scheduling tool, as I mentioned. The annual cost of the Salesforce licensing will now exceed $100,000. The total three-year licensing contract will be 388,218. And again, we'll only be charged for licenses as we need to assign them to users. We will have a little bit of cost savings because we will no longer be using the SARS scheduling tool, which will be about $15,000 annually. So our recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a renewal of the Salesforce licensing contract for three years in the amount of 388,218, which will cover from November 1st of '25 through October 31st of 2028.
President Blanca?
Thank you. We're very excited to bring this to the board. You may recall, we have had conversations for at least a year back when Alex was on the board, discussing the importance of early alerts. And I, we are pleased that the faculty are now engaged with it. The pilot was extremely successful. So I, I hope that you're feeling good about the fact that we're moving in this direction, and it is a result of our discussions here. So I, I just wanted to remind you of that conversation.
Any questions? Okay, Angela and then Dave.
So you, Fifi Blakey, you mentioned that additional licenses will be had, oh, thank you, sorry about that. Additional licenses will be had when more users are needed or...
Correct.
Whatever. Anyway, I'm tired. Forgive me.
That's okay.
So...
So this amount, this amount, the amount that the proposal takes into account, any additional licenses it will need?
Okay, so is it, is it a license per person, or is it a license per group of people?
License per person.
And so you have to...
But the, but the type of license that you need depends on what you're doing. So there's a base license, which is what the faculty will have for submitting early alerts. If I'm a person that's going to do scheduling, I'll need a different, little bit different license. If I'm a person that's building campaigns in terms of how, like all those email campaigns, messaging, those are more elaborate licenses because there's a lot more tools that the individuals have access to.
So then, if it's like that, then is it somewhere in here where it says each license is how much? It's not this $15,000 figure in here?
No, the 15,000 is our current, that's the current scheduling SARS tool that we use, that we're no longer going to use after November 1st.
Right. So then, how much, how much is the license per person? Is, is not this 388,000?
That's a gross amount.
Okay, so that's breaking it down over three years.
That's institutionally, that's institutionally how much we need.
Just help me make, help, help me to understand. That's, that's all. Okay, all right. I'm good. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dave.
I'm always cost-driven, and I'm looking at benefits that it's going to bring, and but at the same time, I want to know how much more we're paying. And so we've been buying this for less than $100,000 a year, how much a year? For the last, so you have not come to the board because it was less than $100,000?
Yes.
So how much was it?
I think we were running about 45, 50.
45,000 a year.
Don't quote me on that number, please.
Okay, whatever it was.
Okay.
So what, this contract is raising that annual cost to 130,000. We are saving the 15,000 of eliminated SARS.
Correct.
So I'm just looking at, we're essentially would be more than doubling our annual cost. I'm not against this. I just want to understand the benefits we're getting for that more than double the cost, and I want to insulate us from being kind of in to a Salesforce system that may have future increases that continue to escalate. And I'm fearful of being locked into something that we're going to see escalating costs that outweigh what we're getting in benefits. So I'm not, like I said, I'm not against this, but I want to be aware of the costs that we're going to be adding to. And admittedly, in terms of our complete budget, it's a small cost, but we have to look at every individual item, especially in technology, which is, I've seen these escalating costs through a lot of the software that we have coming to us. So I'm fearful of what those increases will present in the future. I want to be sure that the benefits are, are worth that additional cost. So convince me of that, and I'm there. So...
And it's probably not as much as, as doubling, but just the fact that we've added all the faculty on, and it's, it's about 700 licenses that we had to add to allow the faculty to access those early alerts. All the early alerts we had before were customized banner code that we're no longer able to use. The Target X tool is much better for, much easier for the faculty to use. It also provides that feedback loop for the faculty. So if I put in an early alert, I'm going to get information back because the system automatically sends that alert to the success coach, or it sends it automatically to Learning Support Services if the, if the faculty indicates that perhaps a student might need accommodations, or to help with assistance with tutoring. So it automatically sends those messaging out to the key support partners that could provide those support to those students. I think it's a really, it's important for us to do this for our, in student success.
That's, if that's true, I'm there. I'm willing to support what I see as doubling our cost on this. Would it be possible, before we vote on this next month?
Wait, can I say something, please?
Sure.
So it's, so we've already paid for this year. So it was, so in June, in the IT budget, I think it was close to 80, $95,000 that we paid for this coming year. It's only that we, because we're, you know, had to add some additional faculty from what we had in the summer, that now we've gone over to the 100 point. So we're already going to get credit for the 95 that we already paid.
Gotcha. But the annual cost is going to increase significantly.
The annual cost is going, is going to go up to about 1, about 120, 25. So this amount in here has a little bit of buffer. We're not going to spend this amount unless we need to use those licenses.
Gotcha. What I would love to hear is an endorsement from the faculty union that they like this, that it improves their ability to participate in this early alert system and to be on top of this with, if it would be possible to get an endorsement from the faculty, that would go a long way to, for me, to say, this is worth it. If that, if there's any way to get that to us by next month, I don't know what it would take, but it would be, it would be really helpful.
All right, we got more questions that might clarify. Eileen, go ahead.
Dave, I, I appreciate your position, but I want to point out that in terms of reaping the benefit of this, the college has actually already been reaping the benefit of a low cost for the Salesforce platform for years because for like seven years, Salesforce didn't increase its costs at all. And it has recently implemented platform cost increases of like 6% to 9%. So in effect, they are already making up for costs that we didn't have to pay two, three, five, six years ago. The, the other argument is that, you know, the college has to license individuals to use the product that we didn't have to license before. And when it comes down to issues of safety, when it comes down to issues of sanity, when it comes down to issues of student success, it's really hard to put a price on that. And if this is what we need to do to keep the campus safe and to keep the campus sane and to help our students succeed, I think that the value, even though it appears as though we're suddenly paying twice as much for the software as we did, you also have to keep in mind that for years and years, we did not pay those increases.
Thank you, that's really helpful, thank you.
Was it, I see another hand, go ahead Ruth.
All of this sounds like stuff we should be doing. Do we have any numbers that tell us that these tools have been useful in student success? How do we know they work?
In here for that part.
There was a part about that?
The pilot, the pilot portion.
You said they do work?
Yes.
Okay, fine, that's enough, thank you.
We had a very successful pilot this summer with the new alert, and we had lots of faculty feedback on what things needed to say, the feedback they got. And so based on the really positive results that we got in the summer is why we rolled it out to the rest of the faculty for fall. And we already had 70 in the first, 70 in the first week and 230 in the first three weeks.
Does this reduce the need for people?
No.
Does it increase the need for people?
No, not at all.
It increases?
Because the early alerts are being, the people have to follow up on their alerts. So it's, it can't just go out into vapor land, it's going to, a success coach gets it, Learning Support Services gets it, tutoring gets it. So it's like the alert goes and the people have to respond and close the loop.
So there's more cost at the other end of this than what this is?
No!
In terms of people who do all that.
Sorry. But each person is, is a different person each time.
It could be a different person, it could be similar people, yep.
We're already paying those people.
Yes, we are.
Did the alerts translate into...
More students being successful, being retained, graduating, yes.
They did.
Yes.
Yes, was good.
Yes.
Good, good stuff.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Next is Tab H, the Capital Outlay Plan. We still have Provost Blanke.
Thank you. So I'm happy to provide the Capital Outlay update today. So let's give you a little bit of background, we talked about this last year, but the Capital Outlay for the state of Michigan, Capital Outlay is the budgetary and administrative function devoted to planning and financing the acquisition, construction, renovation, and maintenance of facilities used by either state agencies, public universities, and community colleges. So this Capital Outlay Report, which you have a copy of, a draft copy, this report is required every year to be submitted by state agencies, community colleges, and universities. Regardless of whether we put out a Capital Outlay Request, you still have to do the report. And report has all kinds of updates, as you've seen, on the status of our buildings, how the buildings are used, all that is part of the report. So regardless of whether you're going to ask for a Capital Outlay Request, you still have to do the Capital Outlay Report. Note that this Capital Outlay Report is a draft. We will add some additional data from the fall semester before it's submitted because the count date of October 15th for our fall semester, and so some of that data will be updated, noting that. So the Capital Outlay Sequence, this is the concept phase. So tonight, all that we're talking about for the, for the board to have to do is just support the concept. You're not supporting the project that'll come later. So the idea is the Capital Outlay, the, the concept, concept of the project is taken to the board for discussion, that's what's happening right now. That concept will be taken for board approval in October. The report is submitted to the state by November 1st, and then it's evaluated by the State Budget Office. Based on the number of projects that it gets, based on the points that you get, you may be approved for possible funding. Then you get, it comes back, and then you say, oh, you're approved for funding, you can now start developing your plan. And then at some point, this is a long process, at some point, you might actually get the money and do a project. And so we will come back and we would actually have a project of this is how much money we want to spend on the project. But right now, we're just talking about the concept. So again, we're just at this very initial phase. So our capital outlay, and so we have decided, again, we think it's important for us to, again, submit for a Capital Outlay Project. We did this last year. We are again submitting for our 2025 submission to, our proposal is to renovate and transform 80,000 square feet of the Student Center Building into a new innovative and more accessible Center for Success and Innovation. That'll be better for students, employers, and for community engagement. The state, oh, sorry, the state uses a scoring formula to evaluate proposals. We see all the questions that we have to answer, how those, how those questions were evaluated for points. So we've gone through and made some clarifications on this from what we did last year to hopefully increase and better our chances of obtaining state approval for the project. So again, we looked at kind of how we answered questions, put the project together, and made some adjustments to hopefully improve that. The project concept is that on the first floor of Student Center, we will be creating an innovation station, which will have learning space for students and community to experience emerging and innovative technologies, including diverse career paths using VR and augmented reality and AI. We already talked a lot today about the importance of AI in our space. This space would also be used for event space for community and K-12 recruitment events. We also would be creating our retail management and partnership space to provide an instructional lab space for our retail management in partnership with local providers. We also would be expanding and relocating our esports arena to make it more visible instead of being on the second floor of TI, it would be on the first floor of SC. This would also offer our collaborative interdisciplinary instructional space. So we would, because we have, we have programs in game and software development, in animation, in our event program management and marketing, our operations and logistics, and our esports management certificate, these would all be, students that are in those programs would be able to actually kind of use their craft in the esports arena. We also would be proposing that creating a comprehensive wellness center on the second floor of Student Center. We would be combining our licensed professional counselors, our student resource case managers, our success coaches, all in one location. So as they're getting those early alerts, they are all together to respond. The center would also house a health center in partnership with Trinity Health. This would be providing students, we would provide them housing information, our transportation support, our childcare, our food resources, and our other wraparound resources. We also will be creating a new Pathways Partnership Center. So whether the student's journey is to directly go to employment or to transfer to a university, this Pathways Partnership Center would connect with our primary transfer partners. It also would have a satellite Michigan Works office for those who are interested in facilitating employment and other training opportunities. We also would be relocating and expanding our Center for Career Success. So there where individual students can find out about pathways to employment, development, community needs, we would also continue to connect our students to employment, apprenticeships, internships, and other co-op opportunities through the expanded Center for Career Success. With nearly 500 student veterans and active service members and veteran family members that we service through the Waddams Student Veterans Center, that center is pretty much at capacity. We would also be expanding that center to allow for more support and study space for this important population. On the third floor, as part of our HVAC project, the HVAC has to be redone in the Student Center, we will be relocating the testing center, which is currently on the third floor, to another area of campus. This will allow relocation of financial services and consolidation with purchasing and budget. So the financial services that's currently on the second floor would be relocated to the third floor. Human resources would also be relocated to the third floor from our BE building. And our second floor administrative offices that have no direct student contact would be relocated to the third floor as well, making additional room on the second floor for Student Services. The proposed request, our project cost estimate of our proposed request is $48,775,000. We are not asking for approval to spend that money at this point, we're only asking for approval of the project concept. We will be requesting from the state $12,193,750, which is 25% of the project cost to support the project. So our recommendation at this phase is that we're requesting the Board of Trustees to approve the project concept. If the project is approved for state funding, a separate board action would be required to approve the building project in the future. Are there any questions?
Diane?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Probably is needed, correct? It's really needed. But my question is, so we're going to do the shifting and moving from one floor to another floor?
Correct.
So I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at, I'm not sure how we can do all of this. Is this going to be in phases? How soon do we need to, you know, if we approve it tonight, how soon would it come back to us to approve the project? And who's to know that the state is going to approve this or not? I mean, I just feel like we're, we're asking for something sight unseen. I mean, we've done it before, but not like this extensive inside of this SC building.
So this is just the concept?
Right.
So the proposal would get submitted to the state, the state would evaluate it. Vanessa, would you like to answer this question?
I can answer.
On the sequence or President Blanca?
Well, so it will be proposed if, if it is, so if it is approved by the state and we are awarded funding, then we will come back to the board. We don't have, for us to hire an architect now, for us to do a site plan is very expensive. I mean, and we might not get funding. And so we, we can't, you're right, it's like sight unseen, we're giving you a concept. The next phase, if we get approved, and maybe even if we don't get approved somewhere down the line, because we are going to have to do something because we do need this, we'll have a conversation about should we hire, you know, about hiring an architect and developing this whole plan. But you're right, right now at the concept phase, it's just a concept. That will come later. We're just saying, hey, you know, I mean, Department of Management and Budget, here's our idea, you think it's worth funding? If they say yes, then we come back and talk to you.
And then that might be like next spring?
It'll be a while.
That you would be approved for funding, and then we would, could decide, then you get like a year to put the project together?
Takes forever.
You got to put the project together and resubmit it to the state and say, yep, this is what we're going to do? So it's, it would be a couple of years out before there would be actually any work starting?
That's where, I guess, where I was going, how long a process is this? I'm just going to go, just quickly, bear with me. I remember when it came up with the old board, and it had to do with the parking structure. I think the, the people who've been here around long enough know about the parking structure. And it was, I would say at least five years, maybe shorter than that, but it seemed like it was longer than that, before we actually, we approved this concept because we didn't know. And then, then there were these little hiccups, but some were not hiccups, like removing a thousand trees, you know? Where are we going to get the money for that? We didn't know. So that's what I'm, I'm looking at, I know there may be hiccups, and I know that we're going to do this, but what's the length of time, you know? Because some people say, oh yeah, we saw that, and then eventually they don't see any progress, and it's all forgotten about, and then all of a sudden, there's a building, you know? So, thank you.
Dave, go ahead.
I'm for this, I know we need to do something at the Student Center. It'll be great if the state can participate in helping fund it and make it happen. The, what my question is, when is the state review process? Like, when are they going to look at this and say yes or no? Is that going to be May, maybe next year?
Sometimes next spring, next spring, hopefully.
So that we, in terms of the cycle, their cycle for approving this, we would know one way or another within like eight months?
Vanessa?
Not really. They kind of just take it up when they feel like it. So conversations are happening, so we'll get a score, but right now, we're, the conversations are positive, but based on priorities that may or not, may or may not be funded.
And this is, this is in the executive, the governors, in the administrative, the executive.
Governor have to all agree they want to fund it, and then at what, how many projects and at what square level? It's all a concept.
This may not even happen.
Yeah, I understand.
But we, we...
And I do know we have advocates at the state level pushing for us.
That's where I got my, the conversations are happening, they're positive, we do it, our Director of Government Relations, he's been pushing for it.
Thank you very much.
We have another question or comment here?
So my question is actually for Mr. Whiptock. How difficult would it be to renovate the Student Center Building? How difficult would it be to renovate the student center building, given the construction of the building?
Full renovation?
Well, 80,000 feet of it.
Okay. That portion would be a lot simpler than the renovation of the HVAC units. So when we do the HVAC units, we'd either have to do it all at one time or in two phases. We do have concepts of how we would do that. The biggest portion or the most impact or disruption would be the HVAC portion of this project.
So the HVAC in the building right now is end of life?
Yes.
So it has to be replaced regardless?
Yes.
And because it's end of life, the majority of the cost of that comes back to the college, right? Because the state will not.
That portion, I mean, that's all within the project scope of this.
Right.
So.
So I, I mean, I guess what my question boils down to is if the, this particular project requires 80,000 square feet of space, is it less expensive to build 80,000 square feet of space? Or is it less expensive to renovate an existing portion of the student center building?
Are you talking about building a new building of?
I'm just saying, if you needed to, if you needed 80,000 square feet of space and you have a building that you have to renovate, or you could put together a 80,000 square feet of space less expensively, is this, is this the least expensive way to do this?
In total, yes. It would be the least expensive. That's what our plan was, if we were to do the HVAC renovation, we would have to move areas out. And as we moved them out, that portion would be renovated and then some areas would come back in, some areas wouldn't. So that, that whole renovation was tied together with the HVAC project, making it more efficient overall.
Trustee Peck? We had that discussion. I love your question because before we came, when we saw $48 million, we asked Greg, how much would it cost to just build a new building? And he said $80 million.
No.
What did he say?
No, it was more than that.
Oh, double, was it?
Yeah, more than that. By the time you demoed that building.
Cost of new construction is exorbitant.
Okay, well, at least, okay, well, it's more than 48 million. How much did you say that day? I thought it was 80 million.
It'd be over 80 million, more, more closer to 90.
Okay, okay, close to 90 million. That's a great question. We, we wouldn't, I wouldn't bring this forward if we hadn't talked about it.
Go ahead, Ruth.
You know, I will, progress is okay, but I'm really concerned before I get on board with this about the testing center. We have issues with testing. We need a larger testing center. Part of our integrity as an immunity college is the validity of our testing of our students. And you've just shoved it off the table. And I want to know where it's going and whether it's going to be bigger.
No, no, not shoved off the table. We're looking at multiple locations on campus. One of them has been identified as GM because there would be space for us to increase the square footage. And I know that the testing center has some ideas around, you know, what does testing look like today? Because it's evolved and so we're looking at multiple spaces where that would land. Linda and I are kind of co-chairing that effort. And GM is looking at the most promising space because that gives us more space to be able to provide for testing.
So it's not being shoved, it's?
Yeah.
We're finding the correct space for it.
It's not in this concept.
It says it will be located to another location on campus, but it doesn't define where, because we're looking at various locations to give it more space.
Well, I want, I mean, we've got a lot of defined space here. And I want defined space for the testing center before I approve of a, of a concept.
So assuming, let's assume for a moment that the state doesn't approve our capital outlay project. Are you still going to put the HVAC on a path to be done?
Yes.
Because the HVAC has to be done, okay? So you're going to kind of parallel plan that out? Okay, thank you. Because that's been on its last leg for a while.
And we have been budgeting, you know, we do have the budget because we knew this and we've done intermittent things to continue to maintain it.
We have to build oil ruptures, we have spare oils on site. So we have budgets intensely to make sure that if we do have a failure, we have a backup plan as well.
They're trying to get additional resources from the state. So that's what.
Is there any reason, speaking of the resources from the state, is there any reason that we are not attempting to get 50%?
It's only, we only, our community colleges only get 25%.
Well, no, community colleges could get.
I'm sorry, it's 50%, but we're only ask, go ahead, tell about the rating.
That was one of the adjustments that we made on, when we looked at what other schools had provided. And it was like if schools were taking kind of more responsibility for a larger part of the project?
Yep.
And asking for the state for less, that you had a better chance of getting at least some funding from the state.
It's actually similar to what we asked for last year. We included the entire project in this cost. And last year?
We didn't include the HVAC.
We only included the building.
It's really, it's a strategic decision to maximize the scoring.
Any other questions or comments on capital outlay? Oh, go ahead, Dave.
One more specifically about this because I'm with Trustee Hatcher on improving our testing center capabilities. And if it's moving out, it would be great to have a sense of what the cost of that's going to be. And if it, if we're going to move it somewhere else, it makes sense that it should move as part of this project. But it would be good to have a handle on what we're doing in that regard and how much it might cost. Because that cost is not built into this, I don't believe.
Right, it's part of the, when we, we've talked about the HVAC project, we've, we've have to include the cost of moving the testing center because as we do the HVAC, the testing center will not be able to remain where it is. Well, we're doing the renovation. So we've taken that into account when we talk about doing the HVAC project, for sure.
Okay, but if we're going to move it just temporarily, that's one thing.
We're not going to move it temporarily, no.
If we're going to move it into a new place with the new design and whatever new technology we might need, that's going to have costs.
Correct. We know it did not make sense to, because it's a lot, there's so much technology involved, it didn't make sense to move it just temporarily and then bring it back. So we'll be moving it to a permanent spot. A new permanent spot.
Basically moving it once.
Back and forth.
Back and forth.
To a better location.
Right.
But what's the concept?
I, I know you're working on this now.
Yes, we are.
And it would be great to see something come down the pike. And one of the reasons that I like the fact that we're building up reserves for these sorts of projects coming up is that's the kind of project that we're going to need the money to make happen. And the sooner we make that happen, the better.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Tab I, the shipping and receiving building, VP Whipstock.
All right. This request is for a change or a change order request to the shipping and receiving building renovation project. As I stated before, the shipping receiving portion of the renovation is complete. Back in October of '21, Board of Trustees approved a capital project of $2.1 million for both of these renovations. In support of this, the contract with Spence Brothers under RFP 66649 back in October '24 was given to Spence Brothers and approved by the board by, for $1.4 million, six, $700, or, I'm sorry, $1,476,000. As demolition was happening in the maintenance building, a lot of underlying conditions that wasn't evident to us at the beginning of the project became relevant. A lot of the exposure that we, once we started tearing down walls, we found, like I showed you in the pictures previous, a lot of salt deterioration happened to a lot of the metal. Electrical systems had been corroded, piping systems had been corroded, that these repairs have to be made. I know the question would be is why didn't we know this in the beginning? Normally, when you put a design together, there are normal engineering unforeseen conditions that are put into the project, which was. However, these conditions exceeded those unfore, or estimates to begin with. While the board approved the $2.1 million, a lot of these unforeseen conditions will require another $300,000, bringing the total cost of the project to $2.4 million. This adjustment would be made to the Spence Brothers contract, which would raise it to So this quest is for the board to approve the increase of $300,000 to the Spence Brothers contract.
Go ahead, Dave.
So we've already started demolition?
Demolition is complete.
And we're moving ahead with something to do this?
That's correct.
And the sooner we, if we're going to approve this, the sooner the better?
Yeah, if we.
Because Spence Brothers is here, right?
Spence Brothers is here and if we, we wouldn't have to delay the project to wait for the approval of this.
So I, this is totally unforeseen. It's kind of like when our sewer system blew up on us. And I, I think it's the kind of thing that we have a responsibility to do. And as a board member, I'm going to support it and argue that we should support it and take advantage of the fact that we can do this now while the project's in play, happening, and make it happen as soon as and quickly as possible. So I would actually, if other people on the board are supportive of this, I would move, that we move this to action tonight, just so we can take advantage of the, as the project's in process, that we not delay it and we make it happen as quickly as possible because delay is money.
Go ahead, Bill.
Spence Brothers is a solid commercial contractor there in Ann Arbor, they're in Saginaw, they're in Traverse City. I've had experience with them and I don't see how we could go wrong.
Were there any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Ruth.
I saw the, the cement blocks. Is that where the salt's going to go against the cement? Isn't it going to do the same thing as it did to the wood and the metal?
Not as much. I mean.
Is there some way we can contain salt or put it outside somewhere under a tent or something?
Well, actually, it is, but a lot of it is, if you think of it, you know, this is a storage building for our trucks and everything. So that these trucks come in, they're loaded with salt and all that and they're wet, that water seeps out, it gets in between the, the, it was actually the steel and the plywood would get in between there and it would just sit and rot.
It's going to happen again.
So the cement blocks, if we put those up, we're going to seal it. So we won't have that, that penetration like we did with the wood in between the walls. So the cement blocks are, is a better barrier to contain that salt.
Because don't you see those TP things on the highway with salt in them? That's not rotting a building, but never mind, go ahead.
It's the trucks and the equipment, right?
Well, it's, yeah, this, if it was dry salt, it wouldn't be. It's when that salt gets wet and permeates or goes up against, I mean, you got galvanized steel and it's really corrosive with copper. You know, a lot of our electrical wiring that it was exposed to it was, was gone. So at least with the cement walls, which are four foot up, are going to contain that a lot better than just the galvanized steel walls that we had.
So the board in 10 years is going to look back and say, why did this board approve? Never mind.
No.
Okay, fine.
No, that was smart board.
Yeah, this building's been up almost 25 years with the way it is now.
25 years from now, there'll be a, okay.
Go ahead, Dave.
I just want to say, when I was on the DDA, we had, we looked at, at a lot of these concrete parking structures and key to protecting, and they, they had steel in the concrete, so there was additional need to protect because the steel is going to be what really corrodes. But there are all sorts of products to seal these things off with. And I think we use some in our parking structure now.
Yep.
On the surfaces of the parking structure.
That's correct.
So I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm assuming that there's going to be some significant sealing of the concrete blocks to protect it from that salt.
Absolutely, yes, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, everybody, I'd like to entertain a motion at this time to move Tab I to an action item on the agenda.
Support.
Thank you. Please call the role, Vanessa?
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeBardi?
Yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes. Thank you. I would like to, where's my language here?
So that moves it to action.
Yes, that moves it to action. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Tab I, that the board approved contract increase of 300,000 with Spence Brothers, bringing the total contract amount not to exceed 1,776,500.
Support.
Thank you. Vanessa, please call the role.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeBardi?
Yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. All right, moving on to Tab J, the mobile classroom. Oh, I'm so excited about this.
Well, board, I am excited as one could be at 9:13 at a board meeting about something that we have been at the college talking about as a strategic goal since 2019. And we kind of shelved it with COVID and we've been, over the last couple of years, discussing how can we bring what we do on the road across our community, specifically across Washtenaw County? So before you today is a recommendation to purchase a mobile classroom trailer. It is a 53-foot expandable mobile classroom that really serves as an extension of the college's mission across our county with exploration for young people and adults, but then being able to potentially offer classes on-site across our community. As we mentioned in our LSV presentation, we go out to at least 50 to 60 different events, the auto show, but then A2 Tech 360 in a few weeks. This would be a tool that we would have to be able to showcase the good work that happens here every day. And it's, it's focused and paid for by a, a grant, our semiconductor grant through MEDC. So the focus would be semiconductors, advanced manufacturing, but we can extend that to EVs, IT, STEAM, and even health sciences programs. It really would position us as a leader across our region. And I'm happy to report that this $460,000 is fully covered by way of a grant and any ongoing expenses would be covered through the Instructional General Fund. There are some pictures of this, I'm going to ask Casey to pull those up. So this 53-foot trailer, as you'll see rendering here is 18 seats, we probably could get about 20 to 22 in there. It'll be fully branded and would have, of course, technology, talking to our new CIO about satellite Wi-Fi that didn't know existed, but really an extension of the college. So when we talk about doing outreach to IPSE, we talk about doing outreach to Mylan or Manchester. We talk about, um, in Dr. Marusi's area, from a contract trading perspective, being able to pop up a trading, uh, on a company site to bring equipment that's portable, we're not going to stall anything in here. Uh, it really provides a new level of opportunity for us. Uh, the state was very impressed, uh, with our desire to purchase this and sees this as a real extension of, of, uh, not just advanced manufacturing, but other careers that we can do across our county. So, uh, the recommendation is that the board would approve, uh, the purchase of this trailer, uh, for four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, through MRA Mobile, uh, which is located in Madison Heights. This is an external rendering of what this looks like, uh, part of, uh, the, the four hundred and sixty thousand dollars uh, would be supported, uh, a trailer, uh, and a generator, uh, as well as, uh, management to be able to support this, um, for a number of visits that we determined right throughout the year. So, uh, really excited, uh, our goal was to make this broad enough that it could be used in virtually any, uh, discipline that wants to go out and talk about what they're doing, but then also wants to do hands-on demonstrations. Willing to answer any questions that the board might have.
Go ahead, Ruth.
Who's going to drive it?
So, yeah, so MRA Mobile, uh, as part of our, our contract with them, uh, they would provide the driver, thus reducing the liability, that would be a, a certified CDO driver, um, and then they would support, uh, the scheduling of this. Um, so as Dean Samoski and faculty and I started to kind of unpack what this would look like, we did think about things, and if we want to bring this to downtown Ann Arbor or Frog Town Park, that we got to work with the city to see if the area can, um, accommodate the, the weight, the size, what's permissible, what's not, so, uh, they would support us in doing that. We basically provide them, uh, where we're going, and they provide our, that backend support.
Where would we store it?
So there's a couple of different options there, um, should we get township approval? We potentially can store it here on campus, uh, for a number of months throughout the year that it may not be in use, uh, but MRA is part of our contract, uh, has a, uh, full storage facility on site where they designed and built these. Uh, and it was funny when Dean Samoski and I went to, um, tour it, she had already been, when I went there, um, Mock Community College and other schools were parked in a line, uh, because we don't, you know, necessarily wanted our campus all the time, or we may, it's just really going to be up to us. So either on campus, in our newly paved lot, lot two, uh, or, or somewhere offsite.
Go ahead, Eileen.
What, uh, what is the annual estimated operating cost for this?
It varies depending on how many trips that you take. Um, so it's anywhere from eighty to ninety thousand annually, that makes in all of that management for a number of trips, up to however much you want it to be, depending on how many trips you want. Uh, so that gets you, I think, twenty or twenty-five trips, uh, but as you increase that cost, uh, or in- increase the amount of trips, you then increase your cost. Uh, we truly believe that, uh, with future grants that we do, that, uh, oftentimes you can, uh, include these types of exploration or marketing costs that we could include, uh, but then also, um, departmentally, uh, as departments want to use this, uh, we believe that some of that cost can be borrowed through department budgets.
What is the life expectancy of this?
So there was a variety of, uh, trailers that were there, um, the oddest I saw was probably from the seventies. Um, and this one is used, of course, because this would be a million dollars brand new, um, I believe this is a two thousand eight. Uh, so there's a forty, fifty-year lifespan if you take care of it, much like we take care of our, our cars, right? So, uh, they cover all that maintenance, so we would not have to cover that as part of our maintenance agreement. And we really tried to look for a partner that, they're doing this for Mark, they're doing it for other schools, they're doing it for healthcare, the Trinity has one, uh, I know the county has one now, that we wanted to ensure that we weren't going to create that burden on us, uh, to now, we have enough cars that we need to fix over the auto shop.
And so we are buying the trailer, we are not buying the cab?
We are buying the trailer, we are not buying the cab.
Okay, and so the cab remains owned by?
MRA.
Company that we're working with?
Yes.
Okay.
So in the future, if we decided we could potentially buy our own trailer, but starting off, we need to really look at, uh, building this program out that we don't, uh, want to bear that cost and that liability.
Okay, and the cab is not branded with WCC branded?
The, the cab would be branded.
Would be.
Yes, so they would, uh, brand that cab as it goes out, uh, as well as that driver, uh, would wear WCC apparel.
And what would be the, what would be the cost of outfitting the cab, or outfitting the trailer, I'm sorry, with the equipment?
So, uh, baked into this cost is some base level equipment, so if we look at like TVs and stuff, the only thing that, uh, we potentially have to look at, which you may already have some, is, um, our flexible furniture. Uh, so that's the only, uh, cost that we would have to bear, and that would be, uh, the flexible furniture that we have in our labs now.
Thank you. Dave and then Bill.
So you said this, this is grant-supported?
Yes, the purchase of the trailer is grant-supported, as well as the first year of maintenance.
And where is the grant money coming from?
Uh, MEDC provided us two million dollars for our semiconductor program.
So the State, uh, Department of Economic Development, or?
Uh, Labor, Labor and Economic Opportunity by way of MEDC.
Yeah, and, and the first year, you said?
Yep.
So if we get this grant, which is already committed?
Yeah, we've already have the grant, it's already adored.
And do this, and decide after a year, we just want to park it on our parking lot?
We could totally do that.
Put it somewhere where people could see it when they're driving by the campus, so we get the free advertising?
Yep, as long as Craig lets me do that. Salute Craig.
But right now, it's, we're committing to something that we already have the grant dollars for, and then we have at least a year of use that's already in that grant also?
Yes.
It's hard to say no.
What kind of geography do we envision covering with this rig?
I think our goal is to focus on the county, right? Uh, because we have a lot of outlying areas that, um, know about WCC, but to have something come out to their neighborhood, whether it's at their, their summer festivals or fairs, uh, so I think that's our first priority. Uh, the only out of county, I think, right now that we would plan is definitely want to be at the auto show. So, you know, how we can make that happen, uh, maybe logistically challenging, but that will be a dream, so.
Uh, do we have any other trailers that we pull with, with a, you know, cab truck that says our branding on it?
We do, so we have a twenty-eight foot, um, thirty foot, and I'm not sure I'm going to lead on Dean Samoski if we still have the fifty-one foot? Yeah, that, that one is, uh, needed to go home, uh, to glory, so that, that one's been around, it's been around for a long time. Uh, those, those two, the twenty-eight foot and thirty foot were purchased actually when I was Dean, so that was ten years ago. The fifty-one foot that really, we're going to look at probably disposition, that, that was at least twenty, twenty-five years. Those were not like this, though. So those, the twenty-eight and thirty foot are designed to, uh, pull vehicles and bikes. The fifty-one foot, um, has some towing capacity, but then some area where you can kind of stand around, but it was nothing like this that will, with a cab, has power, has air, has heat, has technology, has Wi-Fi.
I ask because one day traveling to work on twenty-three North, I passed two of them. They were together, traveling north, and I'm like, where are you going? WCC's that way, so, but, you know, just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, so as we mentioned, like Eyes on Design in Detroit, probably not going the right way, uh, but there are a number of, how do I say this, areas that invite us in because they like what we have here at the college that could be a little bit further down the road where there's a neighboring college, but they know that we have great programs, right? So, uh, I'm not sure where that, what was going, but it probably was an event that we had signed up for.
As much, but, yeah, um, I would-
Were they driving safe?
Well, you know, maybe you ought to put, you know, if I'm not driving well, put a number on the bottom. No, they were driving safe, but I was excited to see it, because I didn't know that we had, you know, such, such, um, vehicles and, and things, so, but this is, this is absolutely awesome. I just-
Oh, I just- I just- And Diane? Okay.
I just wondered if there's a bathroom.
There is no bathroom, uh, we did verify that, uh, but where we go generally would be a place where there's a restroom, you know?
I was just going to, excuse me, everybody, but I was just, when you're talking about the trailers back in the day, well, when I first started back at, or started at Washinaw Community College, but some of my classes were in a trailer over on the burn, so, and it was cold and it was hot, so.
Trustee McKnight Morton, these are very much upgraded, and, uh, will give you a whole new experience.
Oh, wow, that'd be great. Go ahead, Eileen.
So you did mention that the first year of maintenance is included in the grant, so what is the second year of maintenance?
So that management fee altogether includes everything, that's that ninety thousand to, two, three, four, however, you know, many visits we want to go, that is inclusive of, uh, management by providing the driver, the coordination of where the, where we go and, and negotiating space, but then also maintenance, so it's all. Yep, yep, so it's kind of a baked in, right?
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Dave.
Can we take this to the Michigan Community College Association Conference and park it outside in order to have a big visual impact?
If it's on Mackinac Island.
No, sometimes it's at the Grand Traverse Resort.
You can throw that out your mind, David, because we did not do that.
Any other questions? Okay, everybody, um, thank you. Uh, tab K, um, proposed changes to Board Policy twenty-one twenty, the articulation policy. We have, uh, Mr. Tucker again.
Yes, so, uh, this is the beginning of a number of policies that we're going to be bringing to the board, uh, that have student success at the center. And, um, tonight's two policies are, are mainly just, um, aligning with current terms and terminology, um, and doing a little bit of cleanup. Uh, so what you'll see here in twenty-one twenty, this is our policy on articulation. Um, about twenty-five years ago, we referred to those industry partnerships as business and industry, now they're industry. So this is removing, uh, the, um, nomenclature of business and industry and leaving industry. In addition, um, at the time, uh, we refer to higher-level colleges as senior colleges and universities. Uh, this brings it in line with four-year colleges and universities. Um, remaining changes, um, in terms of grant, granting credit for courses, um, it adds a hyphen between posts and secondary. Updating the nomenclature regarding business and industry, um, and really lifting up apprenticeships, because we know now, uh, there are two ways to industry training, one is through a industry-led apprenticeship and, uh, or partnership or program and a registered apprenticeship, so we've got a apprenticeship there. This policy also, um, said that we would seek to develop two plus two post-secondary program articulations. Uh, we struck that language and put, um, examples of two plus two or three plus one, uh, knowing that, uh, we have, uh, many partnerships now that allow for people to come, not just two plus two. Uh, and then the only other change is just the date that we revised in October twenty-five. So it is the recommendation that we would approve the proposed changes to more policy twenty-one twenty articulation policy as submitted.
Questions on this policy? Go ahead, Ruth.
So tell me again, we're revising policies that?
Focus on student success.
Student success.
Student success, yes.
And then we're going to go to another bunch at some point?
I only can speak to student success.
Technology, and, and technology.
And technology.
How many are there?
Eight?
A few, yeah.
Something like that, five? Yeah, it may be a few more, yes, for sure.
Any other questions on this policy? Okay, uh, let's move forward to tab L, uh, the Board Policy thirty-thirty-three, College Certificate Structure Policy. Mr. Tucker.
So, um, it is the recommendation that, uh, the board would approve, uh, once again, some minor changes to thirty-thirty-three, the College Certificate Structure Policy. Um, when this policy was formed, um, it, it basically gave some direction that we would adopt for certificates effective at the two thousand, two thousand one academic year. So we're striking that language because we offer lots of certificates now, um, and, you know, we're now here twenty-five li- uh, years later, so we changed that language and just say, offer, um, the four certificates, um, not changing any language, uh, regarding the, uh, types of certificates. We know we offer a post-associate, an advanced certificate, a certificate, and then a certificate of completion. Uh, there's no, um, major changes to the requirements, post, so, associate certificate, uh, mainly is just, uh, nine hyphen credit difference for consistency. Uh, once again, advanced certificate, um, nine, uh, hyphen credit. Uh, under certificate, um, hopefully Trustee Hatcher would appreciate, there's a, a uppercase L, not a lowercase L. Um, and then, uh, we also changed, uh, five-nine hyphen credit, um, for this one. Uh, we did remove, uh, under certificate of completion, uh, these are, uh, very short-term, uh, very few of these are offered. Uh, but we did say courses numbered, um, zero, five, one, and below cannot be used towards completion of the certificate because we have no courses zero, five, one, or below anymore. Uh, and then, uh, just because this language has continued to be confusing for, uh, our curriculum assessment staff, uh, is that the certificate of completion may or may not be listed in the college catalog. Uh, it previously say, it says, "may not," uh, and if you've ever asked three people the same question, you get kind of three interpretations, so we did this as a test, uh, with a few of us. I saw it as it was May, that you have a choice, others saw it as that you don't have a choice. We do presently have one certificate, uh, in this category, our, our CEDAW program that is offered, um, at the college and is in our catalog. So just trying to, to kind of find this language to current practice. The last change, uh, outcomes, uh, we did add, uh, "WCC will maintain a strong match between student, industry, and community needs," uh, recognizing that, uh, you know, we need to be in the pulse of, of, of course, students, of course, what our community says, but then also listen to our employers. And then, uh, last change is just, uh, the revision date, which would be changed to whatever, if it is approved. Entertained any questions?
Questions, go ahead, Eileen.
So I don't have a question, just a comment on page three, um, in the second line, um, between student, industry, and community needs and the college's curriculum, shouldn't college be capitalized?
I don't think that we capitalize that across our policies, but I will verify that, uh, I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that we-
It's, it's, in, in the basic policy statement, you, on the first page, you talk about the capital C college.
Well, I think that's because we refer to the college, but, I mean, I, I would be open if you want to make that amendment, yeah, for sure.
Just asking.
Yeah.
Are there questions here? All right. Oh, go ahead.
So if we approve these in October, that date would, at the end, would be changed to our October date?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, all right, homestretch, everyone, tab M, these are our action items. Um, tab M, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees certifies that the college does, does meet the best practice standards required for the state appropriations under section two-thirty, the State School Act as submitted. Do I hear a motion? Thank you, um, any questions on this before we vote? Anybody? Okay, um, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer Devardy?
Yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Thank you, tab N, revision to our schedule of- Revision to our schedule of monthly board meetings. Let's see where it's at. Is it all on there?
Yeah.
Tab N, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees establish and hold a retreat on Thursday, October 30th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the seminar room at the Health and Fitness Center at Washtenaw Community College, located at 4833 East Huron River Drive, Ann Arbor. Do I hear a motion? Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this first?
Or could I vote, either one?
Give Vanessa your request. All right, Vanessa, please call the role.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer Dovardi?
Yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, I'd like to, at this time, entertain a motion to adjourn the monthly meeting?
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Lord!
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.